We ready? Only got a few seconds here yet.
You'll never get it.
Preparation.
It's only been four years. Maybe six.
I'm not going to say anything tonight.
What did you, what did you bring tonight, Councilor?
Well, things are looking up.
Put the mic back then.
Light refreshments for all, is that what?
Bruce brings them all the time. I'm sure everybody's welcome to them.
Wait a minute, what? I was instructed by my predecessor that I had an obligation to bring him Kleenex and cough drops.
Some traditions are hard to break. All right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The hour is seven o'clock and as Mayor, I hereby call to order a meeting of the Laconia City Council scheduled for August 26, 2019 at this hour. As always, we will begin our meeting tonight with a salute to our American flag. I would ask that you please rise and join Counselor Henry Lippman in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. For the record, I will note that the ministers tonight's meeting are being kept by the city clerk, Cheryl Hebert, and at this time, I would ask that she please call a roll.
Counselor Cheney.
Here.
Counselor Bowns.
Here.
Counselor Lippman.
Present.
Counselor Haynes.
Here.
Counselor Hamel.
Here.
Counselor Hosmer.
Here.
Mayor Engler.
Present.
Let the record show that all six counselors are present tonight and that a quorum has been established for this meeting. We'll also note for the record that the council is joined at the front table tonight by city manager Scott Myers and by the city finance director Glenn Smith. Our first order of regular business tonight is acceptance of minutes. Before you counselors tonight, you have the minutes to our meeting on August 12. They were submitted to you by the clerk on the 14th and as of tonight, no corrections or changes have been suggested. And if there are none at this hour, I'm going to declare the minutes to our meeting on August 12, 2019 to be approved as submitted by the clerk. We have one consent and action item quickly tonight to go over. That's on page 15 of your packet and that is a request for Laconia Bike Timberfest, which we had last year and is the temporary traffic order, which you see on page 16. And my understanding is there are no changes to what was done last year, so that's why it's on the consent and action calendar. So a motion would be in order at this time to move to approve temporary traffic order number 12. Laconia Bike Timberfest pending the approval of the Special Events Review Commission. Approve a waiver of all licensing and special event fees extending the hours of operation of sound equipment and/or loudspeakers for Bike Timberfest from 10:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on September 13, 2019 and September 14, 2019 and to allow alcohol consumption on city property in the designated areas only. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Cheney seconds it. Any discussion?
Yes, go ahead. It's 10:00 a.m. I see a typo here.
Oh, I'm sorry, 10:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Yes.
We'll consider that a friendly amendment?
I think that was tied to the loudspeaker ordinance on weekends.
Oh, no, you're right.
Usually it's at 10:00 p.m. and this is putting it one hour.
It's not the hours of the event.
So the event runs longer than that.
It simply works extending the deadline from 10:00 to 11:00.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor Lippman. A question for the manager. Is in fact the speaker time of 11:00 p.m. the same as last year?
Yes, I believe they did play the 10:11 o'clock last year.
Yeah, my understanding is there are no changes and that's why it's on the consent and action calendar. The reason this is contingent is because due to an oversight of the Bike Timberfest, people didn't apply for this in time to get it to the Special Events Committee meeting, which was held last Friday. I'm just sensitive to the neighbors in that particular area who've had to undergo the issues we've had in the Weers this summer with the vessel that has docked there and disturbed their summer. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. All opposed? Five votes yes, one vote no. Motion is carries. Okay, citizens' comments for matters not on the agenda. This is the appropriate time in our program tonight for anyone who is with us who wishes to address the council on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda. If you would approach the microphone and identify yourself by name and where you live, please. Representative St. Clair.
Hi, I live in Laconia. I thought this would be quicker to do this than put it on the agenda. I have a petition here of over 100 signatures from people who live up at Weers Beach, specifically in the area on U.S. Route 3. In the Cumberland Farms area there, there's a development across the street and some other Heliad Road residents, et cetera. And this is to get a crosswalk on what is a state road, which you guys have no authority of, I believe. But it's to get a crosswalk there, which I feel also is greatly needed. So what I would like and the petitioners would like is a letter of support from the city, which I can then bring to the Department of Transportation, encouraging them to, with no complaints from the city, I guess, to put this crosswalk there. There's good eyesight there. I want to say it's in one direction maybe.
Line of sight, you mean?
Line of sight, thank you very much. It's more than 300 feet, which would be a football field, length of a football field. So I think it's, you know, for that, with that in consideration, this would be fine right there. But I have these signatures, if you'd like to see them, I can leave them with you. I'll be happy to. I just would like to get them back.
Leave them with the clerk, please?
Yes, because I'll need those to bring to the cockpit. So that's, that's my request.
Counselor Cheney, this is in your ward, so I would encourage you to take the lead on this, one way or the other.
I would make a motion that the council support the request for a crosswalk at that location.
I'd second it.
Second from Counselor Hosmer, so we have a motion on the floor to have the city council in jaws representative of St. Clair's effort to encourage the state to provide us a crosswalk on Route 3 in the Cod Street North in the vicinity of the Cumberland Farms store. Any discussion, Counselor Ham?
I think if they, if they have the discussion of to put one in there, I think something that should be included, because traffic going through there is 35, 40 miles an hour. I think they ought to consider putting in the solar-powered amber lights that you can press the button, because they would be very well seen either direction. They are the lights that they supposedly made illegal, but maybe because they needed them now, they are legal. So I think that would be also an appropriate thing to put there. Hate to see someone halfway across and someone on the phone coming down the hill and cause a problem there. That's the area where all the new units are being built across the street going to Cumberland, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. I knew you were going to say that. That's correct. And I, and I should have said earlier, this is not, I know the state despises putting crosswalks on state roads, but this is not making precedent, because in fact, after talking to town manager in Meredith, Route 3, as it goes into Meredith, where the docks is in fact controlled by the state. And as you well know, not only they have crosswalks there, but they have the signs that Councilor Hammer's referring to. And also even the crosswalk by the Weers Bridge sign, or the Weers Beach sign, is also state road right there on 3. We're not talking Lakeside Avenue there, so. So there's no precedent being set by the, by the state doing this.
And I believe that crosswalk by the bridge was supposed to have one of those lights. I think they were talking about that also at one point.
At one point, they did talk about that, probably before they became illegal.
Right.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor here before the council.
I'd like to make adding that light a friendly amendment.
You would like to make an amendment?
Yeah.
And what would you like the amendment to say?
To add, to what? To the motion plus add that the state looks into putting in a flashing amber light for pedestrians to cross there.
Flashing or crosswalk light?
It's a flashing light when you, it's like what's on Highland Street.
Okay.
Same thing. They have to run no electricity.
Do you like that to be a formal motion? Would you consider that to be a friendly amendment?
It's a friendly emotion.
Amendment, all right.
Motion.
And Counselor Hosmer, you seconded that motion. Do you consider that a friendly amendment?
I most certainly do.
All right, so we have a friendly amendment on the floor, which we will adopt then without a vote, with the approval of the man who made the motion and the counselor who seconded it as well to add that our endorsement of the petition includes a recommendation that a flashing.
Pedestrian light?
Flashing warning light be installed at that same location that can be triggered by a button available to pedestrians. Correct?
Correct.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative that motion carries. Thank you, all right. Is there anyone else who wishes to, Mrs. Hershant?
Yes, good evening. My name's Elaine Hershant. I'm the wife of Adam Hershant, one of the owners of the Laconia Daily Sun. Our newspaper office is moving to Lakeport Square and we're excited to have the opportunity to be part of the ground floor redevelopment of the old Opera House. We'd like to work with the city, the neighbors and other businesses to come up with a reasonable solution to parking needs in Lakeport Square. We understand that parking is crucial for future development and investments and improvements in Lakeport Square. I have letters from Lakeport business owners and a neighbor who cannot be here. Among them, Chris McDonough, owner of Fratello's, Michelle Dupont, owner of Lake Opechee Inn and Spa, Kevin Shaw, a Lakeport neighbor and realtor with Roche Realty, Michelle Boldock-Muzzi, owner of Esthetics by Michelle, Peter Stewart of Stewart Associates Architects, and Erica Blizzard of Lakeport Landing. And I have copies that I would like to give to the counselors and for the record. And then if there's any time, as time allows, I could read some excerpts, but I don't know what's appropriate.
I'm sorry, what do you mean by reading excerpts?
I have a very nice letter from Kevin Shaw that I'd like to read. I don't know if you have time.
How long would it take?
Five minutes. Go ahead. Kevin says, "It's with great excitement that I write this letter in support of the Lakeport area. I will begin by mentioning that my family founded a business in Lakeport many years ago. That business is Laconia Electric Supply. I lived on Belvidere Street as a child prior to moving to Guilford and went to kindergarten at the old Washington Street School in Lakeport. Most recently, I have moved back to the Lakeport area and have resided in the neighborhood on Lake Opechee for the past six years. I've been a realtor in the area for the past 20 years. Having been a lifelong Lakes Region resident, I feel personally and professionally as though Laconia has struggled to find an identity. This is the time that a, excuse me, this is the time that Laconia and its residents need to step up and get behind this area. At this time, we as a community are fortunate to have Scott Everett step up and support this area. As one of Scott's childhood friends and as his realtor, it is a great thing to see him give back to the community that he grew up in. Scott has already invested over $4 million in what is known as Lakeport Square. This is just the beginning of an amazing transformation of Lakeport. My belief is that Lakeport will someday in the near future be a destination for people to visit. Each and every one of us will benefit in one way or another. Now is the time to work together and support this area and keep the momentum going. Scott and Recycled Percussion Band members have the attention of the community. Let's not miss another opportunity to make our city great. We have a wonderful opportunity in front of us. Let's support the efforts of these business people. Thank you very much for taking the time to consider this possibility. Sincerely, Kevin Shaw."
Okay, thank you. If you have something to, for the council.
Oh, okay.
If you have something to leave for the council, you can leave it with the clerk.
Yes, I do. And I was just given another letter from Justin Spencer. He says, "Currently, I'm in Las Vegas performing, so unable to attend tonight's meeting. In short, I have a vision of bringing fresh concepts, business and an ecosystem to Laconia. It's why we chose this promising city above all others. In Lakeport, we are starving for parking. Without the ability to cater to travelers, businesses will have an incredibly difficult time blossoming and striving and ultimately resulting in failed ventures. My hope is that we can find a solution that allows Laconia and Lakeport to rebuild, refresh and rock on."
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council tonight on a matter that is not on tonight's agenda? Yes.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you. Pastor Richard Acoin from the Lakes Region Vineyard Church. I've been a resident of Lakeport for 30 years and pastor of the Vineyard Church at 175 Mechanic Street. This is our 11th year at that location. And I have some pictures I'd like to pass around. There's.
Get them through the court, please.
And I have the unique vantage point of my office window looking out over the field at the park. And so what I did is I put together a little proposal for parking. You'll see on the second page, I transpose some parking spaces into the far end of the field where the swing bar entrance is. And at the bottom of it is, allows for three rows of 15 parking spots. It goes 90 feet deep and the width of the park is 154 feet from the opening over. I allowed, I went over and measured the post office parking spots to figure out what you guys would be looking for. I don't claim to be an engineer, but what I want to suggest is there are possibilities. You don't have to take up the whole field, just a chunk of it. We did this at Levitt Park. When they took out the ball field and put in the soccer field, they also added a parking area at one end. It has dramatically increased the use of the park. I live there. I walk there every night. I walk around the walkway with my wife and the use there has certainly increased. You see that white L-shaped building there? That's my church. And if you see the parking lot with a couple of cars there, you'll notice that my green grass has all disappeared, because it's become one of the major parking areas for that area. So Fratello's gives me parking space on Sunday morning. I give them parking space each weeknight, so when they have overflow, they park there. People who come to use the playground park in my parking lot. So much so that I took my handicap ramp on the back of the building and opened up the far end and put in a flight of steps, so that the kids don't have to walk on that skinny sidewalk in the front of my building, because it's dangerous. And so we've become the playground parking lot. And you know, I don't mind that. The other businesses don't mind working with one another. I would also like to work with the city to see Lakeport become something viable. And part of that viability means we need more parking. Because if they open up that white building in the Opera House there, one event, I think the seating in there is like 300. Where are you going to put another 150 cars? If Fratello's is serving dinner and I'm having a service at my, at my church, I mean, there goes all the parking for the neighborhood. And so I'd like to put this proposal before you to look at that end of the park, of the field and consider some options. I think there are some very viable options where the field is not lost. It's just got secondary use for parking and I think it would really help the area. It's within walking distance of all the stuff that's happening there. So just want to present that to you. Hope you consider that.
All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Anyone else on any subjects not on tonight's agenda? Yes.
I've never done this. I'm Jean Cox. I have Art Escape on U-N-A-V. I was just wanting to ask if they can possibly do anything to allow cars to my business. I know that there's an event that's going to happen for Chaos and Kindness on the 21st, which I believe.
That item is on tonight's agenda, so the time to address that is later.
I got another phone call today from Public Works and they're blocking us off again for another two months. I pulled my numbers today and our gross sales for this summer is 30% less than last year. They've detoured my business for almost every single day of the entire summer. They called me today to let me know that probably until November, our business will be blocked off again. They did put a sign up and it says, "Local business is open. Please use detour." And it detours all the way to VIP. We've lost an enormous amount of customers because of it. I, I have asked them if they could put up a sign that says, "Local business, traffic, no outlet" or something, just to let customers know that they can come through. The last time, they even blocked it off with cars. I have tried to bring it up. I was in the newspaper a couple of times. It's been a whole process this entire summer, but I don't know if anybody here can help.
This subject is on tonight's agenda and we will be discussing it later in the meeting. I think, Mr. Mayor, I think that she's bringing up an issue that's separate than the proposal. She's talking about road construction through the.
Through November, there's going to be road construction again on Union Ave.
Can the manager address that at all?
Yes, and we have spoken with Jean in my office a couple of times, my assistant Nancy as well, and she's absolutely correct. Early on, we had the detours going around and we were telling people they could not get through. We did address that with our local flagger and our local construction company. We did run into another hiccup, which I apologize for. It wasn't our best moment, but it was an outside utility company that came in to do some of the work on Union Ave in front of Fratello's and on down. And we handed over the detour route to them. And again, for a day or two, we ran into the same problem where their flaggers, which were not the construction company's flaggers, were not aware of that. We've made it very clear. We've got signs up to say, "Businesses are open." We've got all of those folks trained to be saying that if anybody pulls up and says, "I'm just going to the art place, I'm just going to Aroma Joe's," or any other business there, that they're to be let through. And I know we had some hiccups early on, but we do have sign, a permanent sign up there that says, "Local business is open" and we are not requiring anybody to take the detour all the way around to get there. I do acknowledge hiccups early on and then a little bit later, but I think we're at the point where we've got that resolved. The only time that comes into play is when we are stopping traffic at the intersection and yes, we're going back in and doing some more work. We have not been doing the detour in place probably for the last five or six weeks. If I had to ballpark a number in there when just it was the gas company doing it. We're, we were far enough out of the intersection where we were doing the alternating one-way traffic once you got through Lakeport Square. So where it does impact your business is when we have a need and that intersection is completely closed or only has room for one-way traffic, that we have to put the traffic onto Mechanic Street. So I'm hoping it's not an everyday issue. We are aware and we have worked with Busby and his team to make them all aware that getting access to local business is extremely important to the city.
Go ahead.
What we are running into is it says, "Local business is open and detour." It was following the businesses, it doesn't say, "Local traffic only, no exit." It says, "Business is open. Use the detour."
So I'm suggesting the way the signs are.
And the guy stands at the thing and he goes.
I will personally address that, because for, again, in the last six weeks, we have not detoured, but I do know we have signage ready to go to double clarify that. And I will personally make sure we have the appropriate signage in there before that detour goes into place, when and if it has to.
Okay. Do you know what the signs are?
Just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think, I think the signage, even for people who are used to reading those traffic signs, is very confusing. I think instead of local traffic or local business is open, I think the city would, should consider saying, "Art Escape, Aroma Joe's, open" with an arrow pushing, you know, in the right direction.
I offered to pay for the sign.
Well, I would ask the city to perhaps consider that as a possibility.
You don't need her to pay for the sign. I will personally make sure before we do that detour again that we have signage. If you can't tell, it's been a pet peeve of mine over several months now.
Well, just, just don't keep people guessing, just people, let people know straight up that the stores are open.
Understood.
Thank you.
But I would like to say, and Scott and I had the discussion on this too, and I was sent on a mission to find out something, but anyway, you're absolutely right, what's happened.
I just want to say, Art Escape, Open Door Daycare, there's like five businesses, go through.
Yeah, but you're absolutely right.
Not go to VIP, because we're, we, I just pulled my numbers and we're, me and Next Door are standing out there and we're like.
Yeah, you're right. You're absolutely right.
Thank you.
If you would, if you wish to address the September 21 planned event specifically, there'll be a chance to do that later in the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay.
I don't know how these things work.
All right, anyone else who wishes to address the council on that matter? Yes.
Good evening. My name is Peter Stokes. I'd like to talk to you about the expanded parking proposal for the Opera House. Could I hand out my notes, so you can keep track of?
If you give it to the clerk, please. And just, just to clarify here, there, there is no specific proposal that has been made. A developer has approached the city with a general ask, if you will, if the city would consider leasing or selling him a portion of Sanborn Park for parking. But there's no specific proposal before the city council at this time.
Okay, then I'd ask that you hear my thoughts on the matter as plans develop.
Fine, go ahead.
I've done an informal parking study over the past week and I've noticed that the Opechee Inn on both a Monday and a Friday have 80-plus parking spaces available. This is when Fratello's is booked. So during the busy hours, there is available parking in the neighborhood, for your consideration. I would think that a private solution can be found before a public solution is tapped into. Also consider that this is a small neighborhood that is behind Union Avenue. From Union Avenue, it looks like a very urban sort of thoroughfare, but there's a little enclave of houses and this park is in the center of it. People live there because of the park. It creates an environment. It's almost impossible to get green space back, once you pave over it. It's just a historical fact. If you were to put parking in, it seems like it would be an unsafe place without proper lighting. Now, that said, proper lighting would be a nuisance to the surrounding houses. My house is actually abutting the park. The ivy that's on the fence is my ivy. So please consider how you would light it. Would it be downlighting? Would it try to contain the lighting to the, to the parking lot? It's not an easy task. Most people don't do it. Snow removal is a large concern of the people that are adjacent to the park. Typically, when you have a parking lot, there are large amounts of snow pushed up against the fence. That's how the auto body shop down the street on Mechanic Street handles it. They make a mountain of snow up against their fence. That would produce quite a bit of runoff into the adjacent yards, even with all the measures taken to. measures taken to contain the runoff, the salt, the sand. It's going to get out. And on a personal note, my yard, my basement actually, floods during a heavy rain. I have six inches of water in my basement once a year. It's an interesting event, and I'm trying to resolve it, but this would exacerbate the issue at my place. Also, it's a cliche that you pave over a park, and it's because it diminishes the value in the neighborhood. The property values of this little neighborhood that we're talking about seems to me would go down, and that would be as a result of a business that's moving in, and we'd like some consideration for the people that moved there because it was a small neighborhood, because the streets are quiet. My kids play in the street all the time. We don't worry about it. There's no traffic there. That's the neighborhood. That's a short version of my concerns, and I ask you to consider them as things go forward.
All right, thank you for calling me tonight. Mr. Hershien?
Mayor, councilors, staff. I'm Adam Hershien from the Laconia Daily Sun, co-owner. Peter mentioned the OPG Inn and Spa as having excess parking, so I feel it's very important that I read this letter from Michelle DuPont that addresses that issue. As a business and property owner in the Lakeport area of Laconia, I respectfully request that the city representatives, planning board members, and most importantly, the citizens of the Lakeport area of Laconia favorably consider all options and possible resolutions to the lack of necessary parking in the Lakeport area. It is no secret that my property at Doris Ray Court is a large parcel with a good amount of parking. What needs to be recognized is that the majority of that parking is utilized on a daily basis by the current operations. The property is currently not fully developed, and the potential for development is great. Any new development will be restricted by parking requirements, which is why I respectfully state that I cannot continue to be looked to for any new parking needs in the area. There have been some exciting new investments made in Lakeport recently, and the proposed development will have an incredibly positive impact on the area for the businesses and the residents combined. For the first time in years, we have people that are willing to make an investment in improving our Lakeport neighborhood, and we cannot let this opportunity pass by. These investors are genuinely excited about restoring Lakeport, which is something I personally have in common with them. Our neighborhood is going to be fixed up and thriving again, but not without the basic needs and public parking is at the top of the list. Plan on the parking now, so that it will have the least negative impact on the community later, or do nothing and continue to watch the neighborhood that has the best view and sunsets in the city fade away. Respectfully submitted, Michelle DuPont. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lisa McGarrett Popek. I'm also in the butter to that property. And I spoke with Andrew today, and I have a lot of issues with it, and I had some suggestions as well. I believe he just bought, or there was a piece of commercial property across the bridge off our Elm Street that just sold. He could tear that building down and put parking there, or build a parking garage. I paid a lot of money for my house, $250,000. I've put another $50,000 into the unit. I've had an issue with the town where the road hasn't been paved for close to 20 years. They said they're only allocated a certain amount of money, and it has to go around, and they don't have enough money to fix it. I had a tenant break her arm because of the, I think it's called the apron of the driveway, which is the town's property, has lots of dips. We have flooding in the backyard. We have children. I rent to a two-family, a whole family of young children that play in the street. And even if you take half of that property and make half of it parking, you cannot guarantee me that people aren't going to turn left and go down Willow Street to avoid hitting the traffic light, or avoid the stop sign. They're going to do it, and we have elderly people, and we have young children. We have, I have people in their 30s living there, and they chose, and they pay a decent rent to stay there. Another thing is you've got the flooding. Sorry. How many jobs is it actually bringing in? The newspaper is actually not bringing in any new jobs in. It's moving from a place that has parking to a place that doesn't have parking. The gentleman who bought the building also has another place on Elm Street that's an empty lot that's right across from Irwin, that's been empty for years and years, and doesn't have a very nice view. Why can't they make parking there? If they make it across the street, people, and they put up a garage or something, that would be good for the whole area, so that our neighborhood wouldn't be ruined. You're saying, "Get a few more jobs in and ruin a whole neighborhood." We have kids come from streets over to play, because Mrs. Stokes is a teacher, and she tutors kids, and the kids know it's a safe neighborhood. You guys, when I bought it, there was drugs. The house next to us was a derelict. The house next to that, you guys tore down to make a really nice parking area. It's now become all homeowner. How can you prove there's not going to be a lot of hiccups with a parking garage, and some kid is going to get hit? It's already a busy section, and for you to add 90 parking, even if it was half of that, you're going to have so much more traffic. If you wanted to do something nice to the neighborhood, you'd make it an edible park, and then people could learn, and there'd be places to go, and it would help the whole area. It'd help feed people. We did the drainage. Late-night traffic. There's kids in our neighborhood that go to school. There's people that work, that get up in the morning, and you get people coming out at 11:30 at night, or whatever time it's going to be when the restaurant or whatever closes, and you decide to park there. It's going to be waking children up, and people who have teachers that have to go to work. The streets aren't wide enough for another thing, to have the sidewalks and to have the turning to go into a parking lot. And the town doesn't have enough money to pave the street, so I don't know how they're going to pave, who's going to pay for all this. Green space. You're taking away green space. That's a huge thing. Ozon, kids playing, green space. You're not going to get green space back. That's all I can think of right now.
All right, just for the record, you live on Willow Street, is that correct?
I'm owner of Willow Street. I do not live on it. I have a two-family, 20 and 22 Willow Street, and we have our own parking, enough for neighbors even.
All right, thank you.
And a yard, and we abut, and I want to say, we weren't notified. Nobody has notified us. I happen to have a friend tell me about it.
Notified of you of what?
That someone's looking into, the town's looking into making parking.
Again, there is no proposal-
Okay.
-before the council to turn that into parking-
Okay.
-at this time.
I'd also like it on the record that when they, if they decide they're going to sell it, that as a butter, I think we should have first option.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else on this or any other matter that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, thank you. We have councilors' one nomination election to hold tonight, and that's on page 18 of your packet. At our last meeting, we interviewed Ori Gibbs, who is seeking reappointment as a regular member of the zoning board of adjustment for another three-year term, this one expiring at the end of August 2022. Would someone care to make a motion that we appoint her? Counselor Haynes makes that motion. Is there a second? Counselor Bound seconds that motion. Any discussion? All those in favor of appointing Ori Gibbs to the zoning board of adjustment, please raise a hand. Six votes in your favor, and that motion carries unanimously. Okay, public hearings tonight. We have two, one of which is very complicated, so we'll do the easy one first. First public hearing is on the possible placement of a ballot question on the November 5th, 2019 municipal election ballot pertaining to the permitted operation of New Hampshire Lottery Sports Betting within the city of Laconia. Notice of this public hearing was made in Wednesday, August 21, 2019 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at City Hall, the library, the community center, and the offices of the Laconia School District. Per House Bill 480, legalized sports betting in New Hampshire was recently signed into law. Beginning in early 2020, the New Hampshire Lottery Commission anticipates allowing sports betting in the state through various channels, including up to 10 sportsbook retail locations in municipalities that have voted to allow it, and by inference, not allowed in municipalities that have not voted to allow it. If the council votes later this evening to place this question on the November 5th, 2019 municipal election ballot, an additional public hearing will be scheduled at a future meeting to comply with the provisions of House Bill 480, which requires a public hearing to be held 15 to 30 days before the municipal election. So, the issue before us tonight is whether or not the city should send this to, the city council should send this to the voters to be placed on the municipal ballot in November. And I'm going to open this public hearing at 7:40 PM and ask if there's anyone with us tonight who wishes to offer comment to the council on the matter of allowing a vote on the possibility of having onsite sports betting within the city limits of Laconia. A long line, I can tell. Okay, I will close. There always has to be one.
That's right. And I just want to say that no matter what the topic is, I think it's a great opportunity that the citizens have a right to vote on it. So, I would encourage you strongly to place this on the ballot, so whatever the outcome is, the citizens who do vote can have their opinion made. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing at 7:41 PM. And again, note that the council will be taking up this matter tonight under unfinished business. Okay, now, the opportunity for the mayor to make a fool of himself here. The second public hearing is to amend City Code Chapter 235, zoning, by updating numerous sections to reflect the recent adoption of the new urban commercial zone. Notice of this public hearing was made available in the August 14, 2019 edition of the Laconia Daily Sun. It was also posted at Laconia City Hall, the Laconia Community Center, the Public Library, and the SAU Office. There is no fiscal impact to the city. Okay, before I open the public hearing on this, this is, in effect, a housekeeping measure. Earlier, the council voted to adopt a new commercial zone in the city, and so there are all kinds of places within the city code where we have to make minor revisions to the language to conform to what we did earlier. And we voted at our last meeting to adopt that on first reading. The second and last reading would be later on tonight, if the council desires, but we need to hold this public hearing tonight. And there are a whole bunch of different sections of the zoning code that are affected. But rather than holding a separate public hearing on each and every section of the zoning ordinance that's affected, what I've been instructed to do is to go through them, to make one motion, but to go through them section by section, in case there's someone with us tonight who can't wait to comment on Section 235-32 Minimum Lot Size, for example. So, what we're going to do is have one public hearing on these 12 different amendments to Chapter 235, but we will be asking, as I said, for comments on each section separately, so we can get through this as quickly as can and still comply with the law. So, I'm going to open the public hearing at 7:43 PM and ask if there's anyone who wishes to comment on the First Amendment, which is the Wetlands Conservation and Water Quality Overlay District, and how that is affected by this change of ordinance. No? All right, so the next one has to do with Section 235-22.3, having to do with definitions in the zoning ordinance. Anyone wishing to comment on that? Next up is Section 235-32, having to do with minimum lot size. Anyone? Next up is Section 235-35, having to do with minimum setback requirements. Next up is Section 235-36, having to do with green space. Yes?
Does that have to do with the parks, and is our park being rezoned?
Oh, this is in the commercial zone. The park is in a residential zone. Next up is Section 235-40, residential uses within the commercial zone. Next up is Section 235-42, non-residential uses in the commercial zone. Next up is Section 235-43, non-residential accessory uses in the commercial zone. Three more to go. Next up is continuing, whoops, Section 235-45, having to do with applicability. Applicability, okay? Anybody on applicability? And then Section 235-48, design requirements. And finally, Section 235-54, design, construction, and maintenance. Anyone want to address that subject? Okay, having no comment on any of these particular items, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed at 7:46 PM and remind the council and the audience that we will be voting a second and final reading on this matter later on in tonight's agenda. Okay, next up is the mayor's report. A couple of things real quickly that I'd like to remind us all, because we don't have a meeting before then, that on Saturday, September 7th, we will be having our annual multicultural festival in downtown Laconia centered around the Bellknap Mill, and that will run from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM. We usually have a terrific turnout for that event, and the weather in recent years has been exemplary, so we hope for the same this year, and encourage all councilors and certainly everyone in our audience and the public in general in the Lakes Region to attend this event. I'm told this year that there are going to be even more food vendors than usual for us to sample from, and there'll be music in the Rotary Park, all during the proceedings, again, from 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM on September 7th. Second thing I would like to mention quickly is, you will recall that last winter, the council took up the matter of supporting and sponsoring a WOW Trail proposal to conduct a study of the possibility and financial viability and whatnot of completing the WOW Trail within the city limits, or at least as far as Weir Beach, connecting Lakeport and Weir's Beach, comparing and contrasting the cost and viability of doing it the way it's been done so far, which is what can be classified as trail with rail, adjacent to the railroad tracks, as opposed to the possibility of picking up the railroad tracks and putting the trail in in place of the railroad tracks. And that study was, ALTA Group was commissioned to do that study, and we thought that would be, that study would be completed by, in the April or May timeframe. And earlier tonight, Counselor Hosmer and I had the pleasure of listening to and seeing a presentation on that issue made by Alan Beadle, the chairman of the WOW Trail Committee and whatnot, that- that updated various people connected with the trail as to the status of that study. And what I can report to you is that the study is 99% complete and ready for presentation to the council and other groups. I believe every municipality along the route signed on to sponsoring, having the city did and contributed financially, including Meredith, to the, to the completion of that study. The one little piece that's missing yet, and the reason for the delay at this point in time is that there is a, there is a small, I think small is, is appropriate word, there is a small freight railroad company based in Canterbury that has a lease for the railroad tracks for their freight business. And so far as we know, that freight company only has one customer north of Franklin, along the entire width, and that one customer is in, is a, is a manufacturing plant in, in Tilton. And that, that plant receives shipments eight times a year, I believe, is what we've been told anyway. And so the, the question is, if, if the railroad tracks were discontinued in that area, what effect would it have on that plant? And do they have another means of getting those shipments by truck or whatever that they're now getting by rail? And that question has not yet successfully been answered by the company in question, and that's what's holding up the study. So as soon as that information is available, that 1%, and the, the other 99 is already done, and Alan and other WOW Trail proponents will come before the city council and give us a report on that, on that study that was being done. So that should happen pretty quickly, I would think. Committee reports. I know earlier this evening, the Lands and Buildings Committee had a meeting on Item 1, the downtown parking garage. Councilor Hammel, do you have a report on that?
I do, Mayor. Basically, it's very similar to the report that we did at the previous committee meeting. Wes did add a few options, you know, that I asked that he could bring the council to have some different things to pick from. But those options would, I don't think we really need to get into all the prices, but it would involve decommissioning the second deck and making the first deck a roof. And then the other one would be to...
A roof only?
A roof only, yeah. And, and high end, that would be 1.5 million to do that. Deconstruction of the garage itself, and making the second deck a roof also. That would be taking the third deck off. And the high end of that would be like 2.5 million. Any other option is to go ahead and do the full boat and repair the whole thing for 4.5 plus. So Wes needs to have some kind of direction on what we need to do. I don't think it needs to be decided tonight. Something else that was brought up by John Moriarty was to do a parking survey, which he does not think has been done. I remember them doing a traffic patent survey a while back, that they were going to change the whole patent of the whole downtown and Beacon East and Beacon West and make them two-lane and...
Well, I, I think in that, in that category, if I can be permitted to interrupt you, that we have a case of the, the left hand not knowing what the right hand is doing and vice versa. I have been working with the Downtown TIF Advisory Committee on this issue for the last couple of months, and they have, the members of that committee have volunteered to be the, the distributor and, and collector, if you will, of survey information. And, and what the intent of that is, is to have a questionnaire circulated to each employer in the, in the immediate downtown area, asking them a series of questions, the primary one of which is, what are your employee parking needs? And so at this point in time, we're talking about employee parking needs, not customer parking needs.
Okay.
So that we can hopefully, at the end of that, and so we're at, the, the city manager's office is going to produce the questionnaires, if you will. Right now, there's a draft out there for one to look at about what the questions are. And then that, and then the members of the committee and other volunteers will take them around and be responsible for getting those forms filled out by the various employers in that immediate area, so that we can get an idea for exactly what our employee parking needs are in the downtown area, and then compare that to the number of spaces we currently have. Because we know, I think we all know, as we've talked about before on this committee, that, that on this council, that right now, just the eyeball test tells us that, that the, the, at least on this side of downtown, the, the demand for employee parking exceeds the number of spaces that we seem to currently have. And that changed dramatically with the, with the move-in of Lakes Region Mental Health into the building across the street, where their employees are largely using the old, the current City Hall parking lot to park in, which is forcing, now, we've created additional spaces by going to the reverse diagonal parking on Beacon Street, which is being very well used. But, so we're suspecting that at least on this east side of, of Main Street, that there's a need for, a significant need for employee parking. But anyway, so that, long story short, that survey is, is on the drawing board, so it will be done.
Okay. So, I mean, this is the dilemma we have, is we don't, we got to decide what we're going to do with it. So it's, if you do the 4.5 to 5 million, it's still something in 20 years, 30 years is going to have to be addressed. Again, we're dealing with something that was built back in the 70s, so we're dealing with that now. The, that council will have to deal with it then, and, and so on. So it's, we either pay the money to keep it up, or we pay the money to start decommissioning it and look for something different, because it's, it's not going to go away the way it is now. So I guess we can wait until we see the parking thing. It's not really urgent right now, but Wes needs to have some kind of direction to go into. And this is also something that even if we said okay today, we're looking at several years down the road to get things going, so.
Well, first of all, any comment, Councilor Bounce?
Yeah. During the committee meeting, there was reference to an annual inspection. Can you hear me now? An annual inspection and what was needed for upkeeps, and that which should be forthcoming pretty soon. Do we have that? Do we know what it's going to cost just to maintain it safely?
We do. We, we have some funds in the budget every year towards the annual inspection, and then we also have funds that we put a benchmark, a placeholder, if you will, in for the needed repairs in order to Band-Aid it along for the next year or two. Twenty, 20,000 or so is what the, what the Band-Aid is costing this year, and the company is mobilized. If they're not here this week, they'll be here next week, I believe.
They're actually already doing...
That was the one there? Okay, so they, they materialized as of this morning. So about $20,000 was what we're spending on to do some, some needed areas of work.
So that's the Band-Aid for 2019, 2019, is that right?
Yeah, and a couple, a couple of years ago, though, when we had the garage temporarily shut down, that was in the area, I think it might have been before you were here, Wes, but that was over $100,000 of repairs when we had it shut down for those couple of weeks. And we've had probably some $20,000 chunks in the interim years as well.
Anyone else?
Can we get a handle on that? Can you just...
We, we can get a tally for you, but we put in for the maintenance on that chair.
So the, one thing I would like to add really quickly to this discussion, I thought Wes Anderson did an excellent job laying out the variables. And at one point in his presentation earlier tonight, he, he had a list up on the screen of the, of the various variables, if you will, to be taken into consideration. Not, not the proposals, but the, one of them was paid parking versus free parking, that sort of thing, that list. So I would, I, not that I have the unilateral right to do this, but I would add, if it was up to me, I would add more, one more item to that list of variables that needs to be taken into consideration in the broad spectrum of things. And that is, if the city council decides to either reinvest in the parking garage or create a different solution, a garage or surface area parking, the other question to be asked is, should that expenditure be totally at taxpayer expense? Or should it be a private-public partnership where the, the building owners, if you will, in the area are asked to contribute to the cost of development of that, of that project? Now, I'll remind the council that the last time the city did a major parking improvement downtown was the advent of the, what we call the central parking lot between Pleasant Street and Main Street. And that was a partnership between the city and the landowners, building owners there. The city did not bear the entire cost of that project. There certainly is precedent for, for the city not bearing 100% of the cost. Anything else on that?
Uh, no. Just like to have the, the committee members and the rest of the council, you know, think about what direction we want to go. And I guess once we get the parking analysis done from downtown and, and, you know, with the city, then we can kind of decide, you know, what we want to do.
Could, could I just interject?
Sure.
I, I think what we talked about was a little more in-depth than just a survey of the owners or, or property owners' needs for employees. I, I think we need some review of what, you know, what total parking needs we have, first of all. And second of all, when we start talking about paid parking or whatever, I mean, it, maybe there needs to be a combination of paid and unpaid parking. You know, perhaps we could use unpaid in the parking garage to drive more people in there and leave the, the outside spaces for businesses that need the churning of, of parking spaces.
Well, I think that's, that discussion has been had at the TIF Advisory Committee level and whatnot, that exact discussion. And there are various points of view, as you might guess, on that. But, but yes, all paid, part paid, some paid. One suggestion's been made is, the closer it is to the core, the more you pay, or perhaps auxiliary lots on the outside that employers could use would be free or reduced rate because they're further away. All kinds of things like that, I think, have to go into the mix in terms of what the ultimate solution of this is.
So, so I guess, Mayor, my, my point is, the survey of, of the business owners may not take in some of those other issues. And, and should we consider finding a consultant who can, can look at those issues beyond just what the businesses need for their employees?
Well, I think there, there are a number of people, including people on the TIF Advisory Committee, who would encourage that. What I would say at this point in time is, I think let's get these preliminary numbers first and see what conclusions we can draw from that. I mean, if, if we know that right now, we had, I mean, we know how many parking spaces we have in the immediate downtown area, public parking spaces, okay? And we know how many of them are devoted to two-hour parking essentially for customers, and how many of them are all-day parking essentially reserved for employees. And so if we find out that what the demand, if the demand for employee parking from this survey significantly exceeds the number of spaces that we have allocated for, for all-day parking, if you will, then, you know, then, then what do we do? Do we take away from the two-hour parking, 50 spaces, and, and does that create a problem for customer parking then, et cetera, et cetera? So I think there's some, and, and depending on what dilemma this first survey gives us, I think we can decide whether or not we want to spend the money on hiring someone to go further.
Fair enough.
And I think also, maybe you can ask Scott, could you look back and see if, if there were any businesses that came in to do these surveys? Because I remember at least two.
They would have to be at least eight years old, because I could tell you that it's not been done in my time.
But I mean, we haven't, until we did the reverse parking, there hasn't been any spaces probably added or taken away.
No, we, we have the tally of how many spaces there are. We, I don't know if you're looking for a study that tried to show demand, customers, what our need was.
Well, I think that's what that part was, if I remember right, was, you know, customers coming in.
I guess my point is probably the, probably the makeup of operations downtown is not what it is, not today what it was eight years ago. So I think realistically, to rely on customer and traffic count and stuff, you probably would have to update that for today. We have the physical count of how many public parking spaces there are.
But could you just look and see if, when that was done and take a look at it? Okay, great. Thanks.
Okay, on committee business, I will remind us all that the Government Operations and Ordinances Committee is going to meet at 6:00 PM on a date of our next meeting, September 9th, to take up the issue of the scenic road motorcycle no noise petition, correct? And I've, as I understand, I don't believe there are any other meetings subsequently scheduled that I know of at this point in time, other than that one.
Well, we have the parking meeting on hold.
Yes.
Until we get some more information.
Waiting for that survey.
Until we get some more information.
All right, any other committee business tonight? How about liaisons on reports? Liaisons on reports tonight?
The, it looks like that at our next meeting of the Planning Board, which is September 3rd, that we will be having the public hearing on the short-term lodging, that the Planning Board will then be making a recommendation to the city as to what to do, assuming that they make a recommendation that the city adopt the ordinance that would come before the council at our second meeting in September for consideration. It looks like we're not quite done with all the comments of the overlay district, the historic overlay district, but there's a reasonable possibility that that will come before the Planning Board in the first meeting, in, in the September meeting, and that would likely be sent out, be noticed up for a public hearing for October. If that were to occur, that would come before the council in the second meeting of October. That's the status of everything that's pending that I know of, but I'm old and senile, I could forget a lot of stuff, you know?
Okay, we won't go into that.
I'd like to, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to put on the public record notice of Lieutenant Richard Simmons' retirement from the Laconia Police Department after 23 years, during which time he served as a police officer, a detective, a sergeant, and currently as a lieutenant, with collateral duties as a bicycle officer, a SWAT team member, and firearms instructor. I hope the city wishes the lieutenant well, as I have, and some of us who attended his retirement party did. And I just wanted it on the record.
Thank you. And we all, several of us, including yourself, had the opportunity to attend his retirement party. I know the city manager was there as well. And wish him Godspeed and thank him for his service to our city, the Laconia Police Department. He's going, by the way, to work for the, after retirement, he's going to work for the Homeland Security Department in Concord. So thank you for bringing that up. Anyone else have a liaison report tonight? Okay, we are to citizens' request to comment on current agenda items. This is the point in our meeting tonight where we invite comment from the public on any matter that is, is on tonight's agenda. Anyone wish to comment on a matter that is on tonight's agenda before we get into new and unfinished business? No?
I just want to, I know...
Please come to the microphone.
I think this is the right time to do this.
Can you use the mic, please?
Hi, Jean, again. This is a time for the event that's going to happen on September 21st.
That is on our agenda tonight, yes. The road closure is on, proposal is on our agenda tonight.
Well, this is the right time to talk. I just wanted to make sure that they were going to let the traffic through to the businesses, again, for that event, because we will...
My understanding is that according to the proposal, which has to go through our Special Events Technical Review Committee, which met last Friday, my understanding is that there will be a police officer, not a flag or volunteer or whatever, there will be a police officer at the, the gate, so to speak, on both ends to specifically, in be a police officer at the, the gate, so to speak, on both ends to specifically instruct cars, drivers, that they are allowed to proceed straight ahead to businesses on Union Avenue.
Thank you.
From, from both ends. Okay?
Thanks.
Good evening, I'm Wendy Osborne, I'm Justin Spencer's assistant. To address her concern and anybody else's concern, and she had mentioned the signs earlier, we have discussed a few meetings that we've had with the city to have local businesses on the signage, so everybody will know that they can continue on and those businesses.
So the names of the businesses will be listed?
Will be listed, that's on the agenda for the signs. In addition, we, we're so excited to be in Laconia, and we want this to be a positive experience. You know, I've had an opportunity to speak to just a few of the local businesses in trying to get, you know, the letters and everything to present, and I was hoping to have, to give to you guys tonight. I know I've spoken with Michelle at the OPTN, she's super excited we're gonna be in use of her, or using her parking lot, so it seems that we've got her support. And the auto parts store, I had a preliminary meeting with him prior to it getting approved through the Special Events Committee, and it seemed like they're pretty cool and on board with it. We want everybody to come out and, and enjoy this and embrace it. I'm speaking for myself on this. I know that it might be inconvenient for, you know, 12 noon to fireworks timeframe to be rerouted and what have you, but look at the bigger picture and, and see that, what it is that not just us, it's like we're doing, but people are coming in, they're excited to be a part of this, they're excited to come to Laconia. We want everybody to come out and be a part of that and join in on this as well. And if anyone has any problems or questions, I'm personally available to sit down and have that conversation and answer any questions that I can on our behalf.
Okay, thank you.
Cool, thank you.
Anyone else want to address the council on a matter that is on tonight's agenda?
Catherine Tokar's, Ward 6. I see on your agenda that you're replacing the Welcome to Laconia signs. I think it's good timing for that. I always, also wanted to remind you that there were several families that were part of the Pride and Image Committee for Laconia back in the 1990s, and we were responsible for the city logo, for the Free Dump Days, and for the Welcome to Laconia signs. So I appreciate your efforts on this, I think it's time to replace them and to perhaps make them a little smaller, but we did have a, a great time doing that with the Caricelles, the Goves, the Perkins, the Wrights family, and just appreciate that you're replacing those, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? No, okay, we're going to move on then to the city manager's report, Mr. Myers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna be brief on the two reports that are in your packet, because I also have several things that I've landed on your desk this evening for you. But we'll start off with a road project update for this agenda, and we still have a couple of major projects going on, the big one being Court Street, Main Street, South Main. We are doing, focusing on the intersection and some work on either side of Main Street right now. Once that wraps up, we'll be back in Court Street, basically focusing on stormwater, then sidewalks, or, sorry, reclaiming the road, sidewalks in conjunction with the paving. So that particular project will continue through the end of this construction season before it's complete. Messer Street is a little closer, we've got it paved, so it's open on evenings and weekends. We're still in there working right now, installing the curbing. We'll be raising structures soon, it will be in over the next week or two, I believe, hopefully doing the final wearing course on that to get that completely buttoned up. But that was a very comprehensive project on a number of fronts, including water, sewer, some utility work, a little bit in there, but further down Messer Street as well. We are going back into the Lakeport area, the gas company has done with their works, we'll be back in doing work in that area. Again, on any of the major intersections that are signalized in conjunction with completing those intersections, they will also be upgraded to the American with Disabilities Act, the countdown pedestrian for the areas. We'll make sure that the push buttons are at the proper height and the proper proximity to the tip downs. And in addition, we're also gonna be focusing on the intersection at Veteran Square, which we're not doing any construction on, but that'll be another intersection that we're prioritizing. So for right now, it'll be the one in Lakeport, that should be wrapped up when we have the base course down on that intersection by the end of this construction season. The Main Street and Court one here, also at the end of this construction season. And at some point, as schedules allow, this fall, we'll be in Veteran Square doing that one as well. So those are all in the works. And for the other ones that we're not getting to this season, be it at Guilford, Guilford Ave., Union Ave., or Busy Corner, we'll be doing those upgrades when we're in there doing those street reconstruction projects over the next year or two. So they're all in the works, but we look like we've got several of them in, being done, completed this season.
Can I ask a quick question while you're on that, Scott? Do we know if Public Works is engineering to have the left or, yeah, the left turn lanes so that they would stay, that you could turn if no traffic was coming?
At this point, we are not changing any of that hardware, that was not under our budget, and that's not an inexpensive look, so it's something we could adapt later on, but that is not part of the scope of work that we're focused on right now. Not to say it couldn't be added as a standalone somewhere else, but it's not part of what we're doing at this moment.
What's, what's the addition and cost?
We haven't gone and looked at that, I know it was brought up by one speaker at the podium recently, but I, I know it sounds like a little thing, but there's a lot of little things we keep throwing on Public Works' plate, and they've got a lot of moving parts going on right now. So I think it's something that we could certainly address over the winter time, where it's a little quieter. And a lot of these things too, they, they get put out in, well, let's just do this, while we're there, let's do that. A lot of these items aren't budgeted for, and all of a sudden you're doing 10, 15, 20,000 here and there, and you, you start adding up to some significant money on that. So it's something on our list that we will be looking at, but I don't want to tell you that it's gonna be done and in place until, until we have a chance to assess it and figure out what works best for that intersection.
Well, you know, we kind of had a situation at Oak Street where, you know, the left turn lane wasn't gonna be put in, and we asked, as the council, we asked for it to be put in, and, you know, it worked out pretty well.
I mean, if that's the.
It doesn't make any sense to sit there, even at night, you're waiting for a left turn and the thing's red, where there's no traffic whatsoever.
I don't think that's something we've run by our traffic engineer yet, I certainly would rather have someone come in and take a look at it and present a recommendation, and that's not money that we've invested at this point. If it's the will of the council for us to do that, we can certainly make that happen and find money in the budget to do that.
Well, I would think if we're upgrading the intersection, that would be the time to do it, because when are we gonna go back and do it?
I think what we're upgrading is the, just the crosswalk signals, the pedestrian push buttons and those types of things, we're not actually doing anything with the overhead lamps, but again, if it's a priority for the council, we can make it happen.
Is it a priority?
So what, so what Councilor Hamel is talking about here is being able to turn left only on an arrow as opposed to a green light when there's no oncoming traffic, is that correct?
Well, once the, the left turn ends, and even if it turns red, so you can't turn anymore, if there's no oncoming traffic, you sit there, through the, all the cycles again.
So you want people to be able to turn left on a red light?
Well, it wouldn't be a red light, it would be a flashing yellow light.
On Oak Street, it's just a green light.
Oh, green light, green ball, after the red, after the green arrow, you get the green.
In other words, on Oak Street, if you want to, if you're going up north on Main Street, for example, and you get to the Oak Street light, and you want to turn left on Oak Street, there's a, there's an arrow, but there's also a, on the, there's a light dedicated to the arrow, but that light also turns green as a whole, not just the arrow. So that even if the arrow is not on, you can turn left if there's no oncoming traffic at your own risk. And what the councilor is saying is that at the other intersections, you can't do that. There's no, there's no, it's either a green arrow or nothing.
Correct.
So you're, at night, if you're trying to turn on Elm Street, you can't do it unless you got a green arrow, because the rest of the time it's red, even if there's no traffic coming.
And, and on Elm Street, I mean, if they're upgrading that, are we doing the whole thing there? Or is it just gonna be the crosswalks there too? Because the reason, because my understanding is, once this gets upgraded, once they come across the, you got Elm and Clinton?
Clinton.
All right, so now each one takes their turn. Once that's upgraded, it's not gonna be a turn, you're gonna go like any normal intersection.
That upgrade we're planning on doing, so that when you're coming up on Elm and Clinton, both sides have green, and if you're looking to take a left-hand turn from Elm onto Union, you're yielding to oncoming traffic, should there be any from Clinton. And we thought that made a whole lot of sense, because that allowed less, less, a number of light cycles within the cycle, and allowed the Union Avenue traffic to basically move more quickly, because there's only three cycles working as opposed to four cycles working in that intersection.
Okay, so, so there'll be no left turn arrow for, like, a time period?
I think that's something that, just, we're just looking at, it's gonna be a green, because the amount, the amount of cars coming off Clinton is negligible.
Yeah.
Sort of try to do a dedicated left turn and then allow Clinton to go, it was just we're looking to do a green where you would yield from, from, you know, either way, on the, on the solid green.
Okay, no, I mean, if nobody has any appetite to go into it, then it's fine.
Counselor. I, I worked on the east side of Concord for a number of years. The traffic light to turn in where DOT is now was a, a red light after the green arrow shut off. And DOT changed that to a blinking yellow light, saying, if there's nothing coming, you can make a left turn. I encouraged that, it worked great down there, and, and it works great at 3:00 in the morning when you look like a fool, sitting there waiting for the light to change. So I would support the councilman's question and, and see if there isn't something we could do at Elm and down here as well.
For clarification, is that request gonna be both for the Main Street traffic and the Union Ave., Court Street traffic? So on all four corners, you would have the option to do that?
I would think so.
Yes.
We will put that in the works then, if that's the will of the council.
Any objection from anybody else on the council? Okay. Sorry, we interrupted you.
Not a problem. Riverwalk, we're doing final punch lists and cleanups, both behind the Best Western and here on City Hall, but those have both come along nicely. Finally, the last one on the Pearlie Pond, our staff has been out there doing some of the cleaning of the invasive species in the wooded area. We have an arborist scheduled to come in and do some of the limbing of the dead branches in conjunction with the highlighted areas that the state arborist or someone from State Forests came in and identified. We're also going out right now for survey services, not only to have that site surveyed, but it was, we were in a cycle anyway, where we wanted to have the availability of an onsite surveyor, you know, that we've gone out to bid on and have them in the queue on an as-needed basis. So that is happening in conjunction, and once that is done, Risk Frost Shumway will be able to bring a wetland permitting plan to DES, talking about the scope of work with a very minimal potential dredge and cleaning up some of the invasive that's grown into the pond there and trying to pull that. So survey first, and then Risk Frost will get their work done. But that's the step that's been done, the pruning is coming, and then, once we get the surveying done, we'll be working with DES on the permit application and see what their response is at that time, and I will keep you posted as I get information on that.
Could I ask? Does this plan include mowing back the greenery that's getting farther and farther from the edge of?
It would be mowing it back, so we want to work with, with the state and then also with the Conservation Commission, is to, if we can get those, I believe they're alders that are grown into the pond, get those removed is our goal, do some dredging to, just along the edge, nothing significant, but kind of restore the pond back to its original dimensions, and then work to have some very low-growing native species to help keep the bank stabilized and some grass, and give people some access points onto the pond if there's winter skating or, or other types of activities going on. So that's the general plan, as we speak right now, the first step is getting DES to respond to what it is we're trying to do.
Okay.
Public, I mean, not Public Works, I saw a poxen wreck there cleaning out the tree line, and they did a really nice job there, opening that up.
Yeah, they were pulling some of the bittersweet and some of the other stuff out of there.
Yep, they did a good job.
Monthly Economic Development Report, not a whole lot to report, I know I sound like the broken wreck every month, but the state's pretty much at full employment, and that runs on down through the major cities and the county in Laconia, so no real changes there. Our July number for inflation came in at 1.8%, so year-to-date, we're running at 1.7% for inflation, and that's a number that's important to the city on the Consumer Price Index, which we use in our tax cap calculation at the end of the year for next year's budget. Three handouts that were on your desk, the first one, I don't have any comment on, but it was a request that the council had after they approved having the Weir's Action Committee perform the parking during Motorcycle Week and keep the revenue, so you asked for an updated balance sheet and P and L on what they spent the money on. So like I say, that's a document that was prepared by the Weir's Action Committee, I'm just the messenger on that. So if you have any questions, once you get a chance to go through it over the next couple of days, let me know, but that's, that's available for you here. Second document, which was requested by the council and we produced here in the city, is an update on Motorcycle Week for the event that just completed here in 2019. So the first sheet is focused basically on the operational expenses and revenues for this year's event, nothing to do with our trademark revenue, which is on the second page. So in the column to the right, you can see what we budgeted in the various areas, and the column, I'm sorry, to the left is the budget, column to the right, you can see how we tracked from what we budgeted to actual. So our budget for revenue was a little over 151,000, breakdown between our boardwalk rental spaces, photo tower, site review fees, and vendor permits and licenses and other, we came in around 121,000, so about 30,000 short of revenue projections. On the expense side for the budget, we had also projected 151,000, and expenses came in just short of 116,000. So after we paid all of the expenses from street sweeping, trash, extra banks of lights, overtime and police fire, Public Works, miscellaneous supplies, traffic counts, porta-potties, and more, you know, on an operational basis, a little over $5,000 net to the good for this year's event. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have on that, and again, if not tonight, somewhere in the future. The second page deals strictly with the trademark revenue that the city has received, since we took over the trademarks of several names, several phrases, if you will, on several items, including patches and pins and t-shirts and those types of things, and we've got several names trademarked with those on those various items. So this is the entire trademark revenue since we've taken it over, so it's for fiscal year 18, fiscal year 19. You can see it was $15,000, a little bit over in fiscal year 18, that bumped up to a little, about 21,500 this year. The difference really reflects that one-time payment we received, that the council was aware of and voted on with Laconia Harley for that, I forget if it was a 50-year trademark deal, but it was a one-time $5,000 payment, and that's basically the difference between the two years. So ballpark, we can expect on, on an average basis, over the last two years, we're collecting 15 or 16,000 in trademark fees. The expenses, some of those were initial startup expenses to get the trademarks transferred over into the city's name. Seeing that we have multiple trademarks and they were issued at different times, there were also different renewal dates, so we have to monitor these renewal dates, which we're doing with our, with our patent attorney, and he's doing a good job of just letting us know. We have to actually provide specimens or photos of specimens to show that we're actually using the trademark, we're just not sitting on it and banking it. So if it's something that says, you know, world's oldest motorcycle rally, and it's supposed to be on a pin, we need to show a source that in 2019, that verbiage showed up on a pin. So our, our tax collector and licensing person, Lindsay Allen, does a great job, she likes to go out and do scavenger hunt and metal detecting anyway, but we throw this out her plate that while she's down there, you know, working with the vendors, that she's on the lookout for which items we have to provide specimens of. So, so there are gonna be some ongoing expenses, most of the times, once they get renewed, I believe they're for a period of five years, and then maybe after that, it's for a period of 10 years. So we will see some little bit of ongoing legal expense, depending on those, when those renewals fall, but the lion's share of the expense for the transferring over and getting it in our name is, is behind us at this point.
Councilor Hosmer.
Just a question, Scott, is that, is that the reason legal expenses doubled in 19 over 18?
Yeah, part of that was just the timing, so it was late in the fiscal, it was late in the fiscal year when we started it, and some of that work carried over, that was just during the transition. I think for this year, most recently, we renewed a couple of them, and it was a couple thousand dollars, so I think that's probably what we're looking for, depending how they fall in what year going forward. going forward.
Thank you.
So, to kind of give you the full sense of the sheet, over the two years we've done it, we've collected 36,750. We've paid out 9,500 or so in legal expenses. The council voted last year to transfer $10,000 over to the Motorcycle Week Association, so that $10,000 was transferred to them, where they had always received the money or, or a portion of the money from the prior trademark owners. That was the arrangement that, that owner turned over. I wanted to say it was 70 percent, but 80 percent to the Motorcycle Week Association. But, now that we have the ownership, the council kind of did a handshake and said, "After we net out our expenses, it would be our intent to reinvest that money," if you will, "back into the Motorcycle Week Association."
So, of the 17 we have on hand now, what would be prudent to keep on hand at this point?
I think if we had an action to move 15,000 over to the Motorcycle Week Association and keep a couple thousand, that's what we have in the queue, or even less than that from what I'm aware of.
Counselor Hosmer, would you like to make a motion to transfer $15,000?
I would.
To the Motorcycle Week Association? Motion is seconded by Counselor Cheney. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand.
Discussion, I think there's.
Discussion.
What, what, the money that we're going to hang on to, except for legal expenses?
I think we might have one. We had one that got approved from our summinals this year, and one that got rejected, even though it was a similar item, it just had the different phrase that was required. It was a different inspector at the Patent Office. Two different inspectors looked at it, and one accepted the sample as valid and said, "You're good to go," and the other one, I don't know, maybe having a bad day or something, looked at it and said, "No, that's not acceptable." So, our attorney is following up. I'm hoping it's just a routine resubmital, but, and also just the timing. We could have a couple of that kick out, you know, next March, April, May, where we want to have a little bit of money if we need it.
So, this, what we're, what we're holding back is for this current Motorcycle Week?
It would just be should any legal expenses towards the trademark arise.
Okay.
And if we don't spend it, it just stays there. We're not using it. We're segregating the trademark revenue expense separate from the annual operating revenue expense. So, if we don't need it for legal, we're not going to spend that line item down.
Okay. If we come up with a percentage of what on the trademark revenue this, the city would get and Motorcycle Week would get?
Expenses only.
We're covering expenses, and anything beyond was going to the association.
That was the, that was the, that was the deal. That was the deal, if you will, when we took over.
Okay, I just want to.
The trademark rights was.
Clear on that.
Anything that we netted after our expenses would go to the Motorcycle Week Association.
So, if you move 15,000 from our books to the Motorcycle Week Association, that leaves us 2,000 for any ongoing legal expense. And if we don't need it between now and next season, it'll just be added to the tally of whatever it is that we collect.
Okay, very good.
Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor of transferring $15,000 out of this account to the Motorcycle Week Association, please raise a hand. We have six votes in the affirmative that motion carries unanimously.
The next item I have for you is this colored document, front and back. And this was in my agenda packet as a retirement system board member, so full disclosure, I am the municipal employer representative to the State of New Hampshire Retirement System Board, and have been there for about 18 months and was just reappointed for another three-year term. I filled the remainder of a, of a vacant term and just was recently reappointed to a three-year term. About two years ago, we had the executive director, George Lagos, attend a city council meeting and talk through the retirement system and where they were, and I thought this was a great kind of two-page dashboard as we were wrapping up the fiscal year ending June 30th. I just want to caution, this is unaudited at this point. It's got little asterisks in the states there, but I thought it pointed out some interesting items that I could go over in a minute or two with you. If you look at the top in the green kind of mountain chart there, you can see that the, the system was funded at a little less than $5 billion back in June of 2010. Nine years later, and this year for the first time, we crossed over the $9 billion threshold. So, a significant milestone there in assets under management in the system. And for those who aren't aware, the New Hampshire retirement system is for the majority of municipal employees. Not all communities are in, but the overwhelming majority are, along with state employees. And there's a couple of different groups for teachers, police, fire, and then other municipal employers that have different, different requirements and guidelines and benchmarks for them. But, they're all part of one system, and the funds are co-mingled and managed that way. So, a little over $9 billion in assets under management. The investment performance is something that I think is very positive. So, when you look at the, the peer comparison, so the, the second number down, that's how the retirement system compares against peer pension systems of its size in performance. And if you look at the one, three, five, and the 10-year numbers, the lowest we are is 20th percent, which means we're beating 80% of our peer pension funds across the country. These are public pension funds. We're at the 20th percentile. But, at the three-year, the five-year, and the, and the 10-year benchmarks, we're at the eighth, seventh, and 12th percentile. So, that's very good performance that we're working with our fund managers against peer groups of our size. The next two bar charts, you can see contributions that are paid in by the various employers. You can see the amount of benefits being paid out. We are at a tipping point right now where there are more dollars going out of the system than are coming into the system, in terms of that. The retirements and refunds is, is not a great stat to be looking at. It just is not really meaningful for this purpose. The other one, when you look at performance, the expenses as a percentage of assets, and again, the blue is what the retirement system is paying administratively in investment fees for managing this $9 billion. And then you can look at the, the orange is the public fund universe of defined benefit funds, which we are one of, with assets greater than $1 billion. So, again, you can see we're comparing it against our peers, and then an even larger pool, a universe of 167 public defined benefit funds. And we're averaging about .33 basis points for our investment expenses, while the two peer groups are at .44 and .48. So, again, very prudent management, both on the investment side and on the administrative expense side. The actuary funded ratio, I recall Counselor Hamel's comment, I think when George Lagos was here speaking, we were at the 59.2% funded. That means how, of 100% of the funds needing to be there to be fully funded, we were at 59%, I think, when George Lagos was here. Over a couple of, last couple of years, that has, has grown to 63.6%. So, we're making steady progress through the updates the legislature did back in the 2011 timeframe. The other thing I'd like to point out is, going back to 2010, the actuarial assumption for what the investment return was going to be was at eight and a half percent. There've been two reductions in that. The first one, a couple of years ago, went down to 7.75%, and one, maybe two or three years ago, dropped the assumed rate of return down to seven and a quarter percent. A lot of that was driven just by what the interest rate environment was doing, and the, the more fixed income or the bond portion of the portfolio, you know, the yields on those had dropped significantly. So, the board over eight or nine years dropped the assumed rate, which I believe was the prudent thing to do. You shouldn't be trying to say, "We're going to earn eight and a half percent every year," when realistically, that's very challenging to do. So, even though we've dropped those assumptions twice, they've impacted the funded ratio to a downward pressure on it. We've still grown, you know, the, the funded amount to just short of 64%. So, this is, this is staff and a good board and our good investment professionals, but really doing some positive things there. And the last two numbers are just number of current members that are paying into the system and number of retirees or beneficiaries. Those are just raw numbers of where we stand today. So, I know I ran through that quickly, but happy to take any questions anyone may have on that.
Anything else?
Thank, my, my, thank you, Mayor. My, my only question is, is there a benchmark on the funded ratio that, that we should be, the state should be targeting? Do you know?
The legislation that was passed basically in 2011, I believe, and made some changes over the next two years and from the municipal, I'll wear my municipal hat for a second. That's the point, when the state used to be contributing 35% of the share for police, fire, and teachers, based on our payroll. They dropped that to 30%, and then 25%, and then that magic year when the state stopped contributing altogether. That went into a series of changes that basically took the unfunded liability, that dollar amount, whatever it was, and it made it on a standalone amortization schedule, so that we started basically almost a 30-year mortgage. And they said, "In 2013, you know, we owe X as the unfunded liability, and how can we, over incremental steps over 30 years, so that municipalities and taxpayers can afford it? How can we pay that down without raising roots through the sky by trying to do it in a shorter period?" They've also done a couple of, of, I know I'm going to get into the weeds here. They've done a smoothing method, which rather than taking all the gains or all the losses and having a lot of spiking in the rates every two years, they only take 20% of the gain or 20% of the loss and smooth them out over a five-year period. So, the changes are a little bit less up and down. So, in a great year, you don't say, "Oh, we earned 20% in our investment this year, let's drop the rates." And then a year, you lose 5% and you're spiking back up. So, there's smoothing. So, my, our belief is that funded ratio should continue to grow gradually over the next 15, 18 years until that original liability that we kind of put that 30-year mortgage on is paid off. And some of the other shortfalls are probably tracked a little bit more in that smoothing that I just spoke of.
So, we don't have a, there's not a particular benchmark as a percentage of unfunded liability that is a target here, and sort of the tipping point that we can feel a little bit better about the retirement system?
I think you should feel good over the changes that were made and fully implemented in 2013, and this first six years have been very positive and have proved to get us on track in the gradual steps. Is it realistic to ever say the retirement system or any system this size is ever going to be 100% funded? That's not a realistic, because it's always a moving.
Right, yeah.
Target. I think if we get into, and this is me personally, I think if over 20 years from now, we were in the mid-80s on it, that would be a fantastic result.
Thanks.
And put us in a healthy place and probably put us in the top percentage of public pensions in the country.
Any other questions or comments for the manager? Counselor Hamel?
I got to ask it, so what, what is the unfunded balance there? Do you know what it might be that's?
Yeah, still.
Used to be 5 billion, so.
Yeah, I think it's in the, I think it's in the 4.6, 4.7. I can get it for you when we, I don't have it on the sheet, but I can certainly get it for you.
I mean, that, that's fine. I mean, so the, the other thing that's, to me is concerning is the, those two blue things on your front page there where, you know, it's on, I take it this is for the full year, the 708 million. And then the amount of money going out is 826, so that's, you know, pretty close to 120 million dollars a year. That's not funded year to year.
It, it's not, but that's part of that $9 billion sitting there in assets that is earning that assumed rate of return of 7.25%. So, you've got 9 billion invested that's throwing off investment income that would be available to make up that difference. So, that's a raw payroll number. So, there's 708 million dollars coming in through payroll from employers, and right now, there's 826 million going out. But, the whole investment side of it is what we want to keep up and produce the difference in order to keep the system solvent.
But, does that suggest that the, at the next opportunity, they do it two years at a time, right? The legislature's going to make us come up with more money to close that gap.
No, actually, this, this past July 1 was the first time we've seen, and I, I kind of quote about this when I did the budget presentation, it was the first year in probably two and a half decades, employer rates actually went down. And I think we've hit that tipping point where we've made more conservative assumptions, that seven and a quarter percent is built in. We've made the changes in the investment portfolio, and we're paying it off. And, and part of what's going to tip it too is, as the older employees, the employees who've been in the system longer, I should say, retire, their, their benefit schedule is a little more rich. For a group two, police or fire, you needed 20 years in the system, and you could retire if you were age 45 as well. For new police and fire hires after that date in 2011 or 2012, you need 25 years of employment and have to be minimum of age 50. So, as some of the more long-term employees retire and they're replaced by newer ones, it just makes the dynamics of the system better.
Any other questions for the manager?
I have one more thing, I think you wanted me to touch on, Mr. Mayor. I shared with the mayor and council this morning that I had had a conversation with the town administrator in Belmont last week, and the Belmont Board of Selectmen had taken, had a meeting this morning and, and taken a vote that they were looking to end the intermunicipal agreement that is currently in place between Belmont and Laconia for fire chief services. So, they're going to terminate that at the end of this quarter. And they've got an in-house candidate who probably was not ready to be their chief when we started this three and a half years ago. The feeling was they didn't have an in-house candidate, and we started a very successful intermunicipal agreement between Laconia and Belmont for fire chief services. And that's really groundbreaking in New Hampshire. It was successful within that time with both Chief Erickson and Chief Biati. Their assistant chief has really grown, and folks in his community and his select board have seen him as the go-to person right now. And they've made the decision that he came up through the ranks, he can do the job, and they'd like to have their chief. So, that's really what drove this. It was nothing operational, organizational, very positives all the way around. So, we will be ending that relationship with Belmont. I think it has strengthened our departments. We always have good mutual aid response anyway, but by us being able to work a little bit more closely with Belmont and our chiefs, they've been able to make better connections with people that may be from the, the other side of Belmont that are responding to some of these mutual aid calls and doing that. So, I also shared with you that, you know, both our chiefs, because it was the chief and the assistant chief, took some, took some hits from their, their fellow chiefs across the state, because it was viewed as they were eliminating a chief's position. But, they were very professional, and, you know, while this one worked well, it ran its course, but I'm really hopeful that in the future, communities look at all options, you know, not just the fire service, but all opportunities that we can share resources or equipment or services in order to just be more efficient. So, pleased that it worked, pleased, as I said, with the mayor and the council at that time that got on board, something that was a little bit new and, and went out there and took a chance, and the Belmont Selectmen did the same thing. And it really was a, a good positive. So, it's running the cycle, but nothing but good things to say about it, and, and again, appreciate the efforts of everybody involved on that. On a fiscal impact, we had budgeted a, a percentage of the chief salary in our budget book of $50,000. We'll get paid the first quarter, so there'll be a revenue shortfall within the budget of, of 37,000 or 38,000 that, you know, we'll adjust. And we've got numerous revenues that come in, and some come in more and some that come in less, but I don't consider that a problem at this, at this point in going forward for closing out the books 10 months from now. Now, I'm done.
Now, you're done. All right. Any other final questions or comments for the city manager? All right, if not, we'll move on to new business. Call your attention, counselors, to page 28 of your packet. First reading of Resolution Number 21 relative to the approval of bonding to finance the repair and restoration of the historic Colonial Theater. And why in the world are we taking up this again? Well, there's a memorandum there, which I'm sure you have read on page 28 that explains it. For, for audience, I will, we'll go over it very quickly, and that is that the council did previously vote to borrow 6.7 million dollars and invest it in the Colonial Theater project through the first five years as a loan, and then outright ownership after that, and of the, of the theater. And when the documents that we approved were reviewed by bond council, they be, they became concerned about the, the resolution that we passed reference to RSA Chapter 33, and thought and recommended that the resolution also should make reference to RSA Chapter 162. So, bottom line, we're going through this again one more time as a formality, so that we're amending the, the resolutions that we passed before, so that references both RSA's. Everybody got that?
Right.
It's no more complicated than that. We have to go through this. So, so we're going to do this over a two, two meeting period again. Tonight, we need to pass it on first reading and schedule a public hearing again, and then at our meeting on September 9th, we'll have the public hearing, and we'll have the second and final vote, once again, on this resolution. Again, only specifying that there are two different RSA's we're referring to for authorization here, not just the one. Okay? We all set on that?
All set, just so everybody knows, we're not delaying anything in terms of the schedule that we're currently on.
No, this doesn't delay anything at all. All right, so the first motion in order tonight would be to move the, to waive the reading of Resolution 17 tonight, I'm, I'm sorry, Resolution 21 tonight in its entirety and to read by title only. Counselor Hosmer enthusiastically makes that motion, and more enthusiastically seconded by Counselor Cheney. by Counselor Cheney. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in favor of that motion carries unanimously. All right. Motion being ordered, then, to move on first reading, Resolution Twenty-One, a resolution relative to authorizing the city manager to take any and all actions necessary to issue bonds for the repair and restoration of the historic Colonial Theater in the amount of six million seven hundred thousand dollars. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Hamel seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor of adopting on first reading, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. And finally, a motion to be in order to schedule a public hearing during the regular council meeting on September nine, two thousand and nineteen regarding the issuance of a bond to finance the repair and restoration of the historic Colonial Theater in the amount of six million seven hundred thousand dollars to gather public input prior to adoption. Motion made by Counselor Hosmer, seconded by Counselor Hamel. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously as well. Next up is Temporary Traffic Order Number Ten, up to request from the Belknap Mill to reserve parking in connection, parking on Beacon Street East in connection with sock hop in Rotary Park. Can't wait to see Counselor Balance on that one.
[laughing]
On September sixth, two thousand and nineteen. That's on page thirty of your packet, and that's not on consent and action tonight because it's a new request. Any discussion or questions before we get to passing that motion? All right. A motion to be in order to approve Temporary Traffic Order Number Ten in connection with the request by the Belknap Mill to reserve all the reserved reverse angle parking spaces on Beacon Street East adjacent to the mill and Rotary Park on September sixth, two thousand and nineteen for, from six AM to eight PM for the, six, is that right? Six AM?
I think they wanted to get them out there early in case somebody parked there all day, and then there were cars parked there when they were trying to stage their vintage cars and stuff.
We need room for the ambulance for, just in case.
No comment.
Does this mean I get private parking?
Yeah, yeah. VIP parking, council.
Yeah.
All right. From six AM to eight PM. Want to make that motion, please? Counselor Balance, would you like to make that motion?
Make that motion. I can't wait to get to the sock hop.
Seconded by Counselor Haynes. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. All right. Prescott Farms Harvest Festival, that's on our agenda tonight because they want us to waive fees. The Prescott Farm Environmental Education Center has received Special Event Review Committee approval for their harvest festival on September fourteenth on their property at nine twenty-eight Oaks, White Oaks Road, and they're asking us to waive the special events fee of a hundred dollars and a ten dollar loudspeaker fee. Okay? Any questions or comments? Counselor Lippman moves to approve the request from Prescott Farm Environmental Education Center to waive the one hundred dollar special events fee and the ten dollar loudspeaker fee in connection with their harvest festival scheduled for September fourteenth, seconded by Counselor Hosmer. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Okay. Request to extend the hours in the licensing ordinance for fireworks in connection with Laconia Bike Timber Fest on, on page thirty-five now. We approved earlier tonight the temporary traffic order in connection with the event, and the organizers are proposing to have fireworks on September thirteenth and September fourteenth beginning at eleven oh five PM each night. The starting time for the fireworks is late so as not to interfere or compete with the outdoor bands at the Bike Timber Fest event, which ends at eleven o'clock. City code specifies that you can't have outdoor sound operating past the hour of nine o'clock from Sunday through Thursday and ten PM on Friday and Saturday. The organizers of the event are requesting the time set forth be extended to allow for fireworks beginning at eleven oh five PM. So you did not speak up when we, and you had the opportunity, so I need unanimous consent from the council to allow-
No, this is a mistake. This is a mistake that's just been set. I just want to clarify it, if I may.
All right, come forward.
Thank you.
This information is incorrect?
What was, I just heard was the fireworks are for Saturday night, not for both nights. And this-
All right, here it says both nights.
Okay, not correct. And the other thing is, is that the people that are putting on Bike Timber Fest are not putting on the fireworks. That's a different group. I believe it's the Weers Action Committee that's asked to do these fireworks. I just want to be clear about that, that's all.
Just never mention that.
Because they are two different groups. And, and-
All right, I guess I look to the manager now.
So it does say in connection with, and I think the timing wise, and it was the Weers Action Committee doing it. Nancy clarified because she reached out to the Bike Timber Fest person and his agent to get clarification, and we were told that it was the Weers Action Committee doing the fireworks. So she reached out to the Weers Action Committee to confirm the eleven o'clock, eleven oh five start for the fireworks, and then was told it was Friday and Saturday. And this all came together in last-minute information, probably on Thursday of last week. So, sitting here tonight, I don't know whether it's Friday and Saturday or just Saturday. I guess if you are going to approve it, I would approve it for both nights, and maybe it's just gonna be one night.
Is anybody here from the Weers Action Committee?
No, but I know it's Saturday night. I'm, I'm with the Weers Action Committee. I can just assure you, it's Saturday night, not both nights. That's definite.
And the staff is recommending that the Weers Action Committee be given approval for this.
Well, the Weers Action Committee was the one who was sponsoring it, but I am telling you specifically, Nancy had a conversation late last week, and we revised this based on information she received that it was for Friday and Saturday. If you would err on the side of caution and approve it for both nights, if that's your desire, and if Friday doesn't materialize, no harm, no foul.
But the staff is okay with eleven PM?
No, that's why it's on the agenda for you, because I wasn't gonna handle that one administratively.
It says staff recommends.
Well, staff recommends the council take action on it, I think is what it should say.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. All right. So what is the council's will on this? We've got two issues here. One, we, as he said, if we approve Friday and Saturday night and it doesn't happen on Friday, no harm, no foul.
I move we approve Friday and Saturday night for fireworks, fireworks at eleven oh five.
For the Weers Action-
For the Weers Action Committee, or whoever wants to light the fire that will set the fireworks off.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second it for discussion's sake. It looks like Henry would like to say something.
All right, we have a second from Counselor Hosmer then. Discussion, Counselor Lippman.
I don't like us voting on something when we don't know who we're voting to approve it and when it's going to be. I'd rather give, authorize the city manager to, to take an appropriate action. I mean, I think we can talk about whether we're comfortable at eleven oh five or not, but in terms of who's the responsible party-
I know it's the Weers Action Committee. Mr. Sinclair was correct on that. It is the Weers Action Committee. The time, if it's just Saturday, is going to be eleven oh five, and if it is Friday and Saturday, it's eleven oh five for both nights because the bands play until eleven.
I guess I'm supportive of the event. I just am concerned that we're just piling on and piling on the people who have the sleep as part of their objective of owning property in the Weers.
Any further discussion? Counselor Hamel?
This isn't till the fourteenth. We have a meeting on the ninth. So, I mean, we can-
That's probably too late to order fireworks, so.
I don't think we're not going to approve it, but, you know, to clarify it, to be proper.
I guess the main issue here is the eleven o'clock. Is the council comfortable with eleven o'clock for fireworks?
They do it at ten, right, during the summer?
Midnight on the fourth.
It's one day a year.
Anybody want to weigh in on that? Or are we ready to vote? Okay, we have a motion on the floor that's been moved and seconded to approve this for two dates at eleven oh five PM per request from the Weers Action Committee. All those in favor, please raise a hand. All opposed, please raise a hand. We have two votes yes, four votes no. Motion fails. Okay, the next item is-
A reconsideration of someone who voted for it.
I'm sorry?
I don't think the intent of the vote was to deny the ability to have fireworks altogether. That's a wrong reading of the vote. So I think someone who voted, what's the proper procedure here in terms of reconsider-
You voted on the prevailing side, so you can vote to reconsider.
So I would vote to reconsider to allow there to be fireworks on at least one of those nights.
At eleven oh five?
First, we just have to vote to reconsider. So you're making that motion. All right. So anybody else who is in the majority on that vote wished to second the motion to reconsider the vote we just took? Counselor Cheney, all right. So all we're doing at this point is to bring it back on the table with an affirmative vote, all right? All those in favor of reconsideration, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, the motion carries. All right. So we're back where we started now. So any motion is germane on this subject?
Well, again, I'm concerned about the, the burden that we're putting on the, the public that doesn't participate in these events, that own property and have had to endure an exceptional summer of noise in their backyard. That being said, I think I also, if the manager's representing that it's clearly the Weers, you're a hundred percent certain.
I'm a hundred percent it's Weers Action Committee. I can't tell you with that same certainty whether it's both nights or not, but I was led to believe that.
Probably Saturday night.
No, Saturday night.
Saturday night, I'm sorry. So what, what, what do you see, Counselor Lippman, as a, as the compromise here?
Give them, give them, I'm okay with one of the two nights, but not both nights, I think.
So ten o'clock on Saturday night?
You want to just make the motion be either Friday night or-
Either night or, either Friday night or Saturday night.
All right. Counselor Lippman moves to approve the request by the Weers Action Committee to hold fireworks at eleven oh five PM on either Friday or Saturday, but not both.
Correct.
Correct.
I, I do want to talk about the, because we allowed the music to eleven oh five, right, earlier? I mean, to eleven, eleven o'clock. We don't want the fireworks going off during the music either, right?
Right.
That doesn't make sense.
At eleven oh five PM on either Friday or Saturday, beginning at eleven oh five PM on either Friday or Saturday, but not both dates. Everybody understand the motion? Someone care to second it? Counselor Hosmer seconds that motion. Discussion?
Sounds like my motion, so let's do it.
All right. All those in favor of the new motion by Counselor Lippman, please raise a hand. All those opposed, please raise a hand. Did you vote, Counselor?
I, I'm sorry. Yes, I did, in favor.
In favor, all right. We had six votes-
It lacked some enthusiasm, that was all.
Not your usual enthusiasm. All right. So we have six votes yes, and the motion carries. Okay. Item twenty E, I'm told, has been withdrawn, and so there's no reason to consider, need to consider that tonight. That was the request for rental of boardwalk space. That's been withdrawn. So we are at item twenty F, which is Temporary Traffic Order Thirteen, having to do with Chaos and Kindness Event on Union Avenue. And that starts on page thirty-eight of your packet, and the whole itself is outlined on page thirty-nine. And the organizers of Chaos and Kindness Event, which is the band Recycle Percussion, to be held on Saturday, September twenty-one, two thousand and nineteen, have requested street closures in connection with the event, which results in Temporary Traffic Order Number Thirteen in the map in your packet. Appropriate signage will be put in place, and every effort will be made to lessen the impact on businesses affected by the load, by the road closures and to allow their customers to access them in as easy a manner as possible. The city will require that cash in the amount to be, in an amount to be determined, be received from the organizer prior to the event and placed in escrow to call, cover all estimated and anticipated overtime costs and related services for police, fire, public works, et cetera. Any overage in escrow funds will be turned, returned to the organizer after the event. All right. So you have a couple of extra things here that I want to call your attention to, counselors. One is you have before you a, a memorandum, a copy of a letter that looks like this, has a city logo at the top. Says Special Event Committee Approval. So our Special Event Committee, which is made up of department heads and members from various departments, met on Friday to review the application made by, by the, the band for this event. And you see there before you thirteen items that have been specified. So the, the, to put it succinctly as I can, the, the, the Special Events Committee approved the application contingent upon a number of things happening between now and September ninth, which is also coincidentally the date of our next meeting. Okay? So these requirements have to be met by the organizers by, on or before September ninth, and shown to the satisfaction of the planning department that they have met these requirements, or the approval would be null and void because they, those conditions have not been met. Okay? Now, in addition to that, tonight, you have before you this piece of paper, which is a memorandum from, from the city manager to myself. It says, subject motion. And this is a result of conversations that the city manager and I had on Friday afternoon, and again this afternoon. And before you in the packet, there's a proposed motion on page thirty-eight that has been made. And the language that you see on this separate memorandum there that starts with "and furthermore," everybody got that? That language is the language that the city manager drafted this afternoon that he is suggesting be added to this motion. And the reason for that is because the, the, one of the stipulations that has been made was made by the Special Events Committee to the organizers was that they contact, they were given a list of all the abutters in the affected area of Union Avenue where the street would be closed. And that would be from, from the intersection of Mechanic Street by the Canton Car Lot there on the south end, all the way up to Stark Street and the VIP Auto Parts Store there on the north end. So they were given a list of all the abutters in that area there, and were told that they needed to circulate this notice to all of the abutters and, and solicit comments from those abutters as to what their reaction to having their business having less than normal access during those hours on that date, September twenty-first. Okay? On Friday, the organizers were given a deadline of today to accomplish that task. And they, that, they were unable to meet that deadline. They're in, still in the process of contacting all of those abutters. And so this language that's here puts into our motion that we would, what's before you tonight would be a motion for us to grant their approval to close the street for those hours on that date, conditional on two things. One, conditional on them meeting all of the, all of the requirements made by the committee by September ninth. Everybody got that? Okay? Be conditional upon that. And further, this other language clarifies what their responsibilities are in terms of notifying the abutters by that same date. By doing this by September ninth, it would, it would enable anyone who seriously objects to this to come to the council or make the council aware of the fact that they make their argument for why we shouldn't do this. So we would have to be satisfied to art, to, that, that they had contacted all of these businesses and abutters about what was planned, and that those abutters had notice of it and had an opportunity to comment on it. Okay?
Yep.
So that's what's before you tonight, then, is the motion that's on page thirty-eight, plus the language that's in this special memorandum, starting with the words "and furthermore." Everybody got that? Questions before we get into making motions? Anything we can answer on that?
I just want to make a comment that I think we should be encouraging this kind of activity in Laconia. I really do. You may frown on it, but it's something that can attract people. It's like, it's not like Pumpkin Fest, but it's this kind of activity that will generate some excitement. So that's my-
You understand this is not a sock hop, no, Counselor?
What? I'm withdrawing my support. No, I, I, I mean this. This is, this is the kind of stuff we should be encouraging. I know it looks like a lot of hoops that we need to make them- I know it looks like a lot of hoops that we need to make them jump through in terms of ensuring safety, getting in touch with businesses to make sure that they're not going to be negatively impacted, or at least we've got their opinion before we approve it. But this is the kind of stuff we should be encouraging.
Counselor Hamel?
Would it be appropriate if the representative, if we could ask them a few questions before, or is that not?
With the consent of the council?
Sure.
Wendy, you want to come to the microphone to answer some questions, please?
Hello, again.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Counselor Hamel, use the mic, please.
Taking after me, Bob.
It's rubbing off on me, Dave. I think this is very exciting, things that are happening, and, you know, I have to say personally, I'm glad that they chose Laconia. Okay? There are things that I think need to be addressed, obviously. Several years ago, we had quite a bad experience with a so-called national-international promoter of, of music up at the Weers, and turned into quite a fiasco, and the city paying out quite a bit of money to cover all the expenses that occurred that he was supposed to do. So I guess my question is, on this list of things to do, where are you? What's been done? Because after this meeting, there's one more meeting.
Right.
And that's it, because the event would happen before the following meeting.
Right.
So September 9th is kind of like, that's it?
I understand. We addressed the special committee on Friday and let them know. We live in a very fast-paced world. I'm a little sad that I didn't, I wasn't able to get those letters today. I found out about it at 4:45 on Friday, and today just wasn't able to get in contact with every single appropriate owner and have the respectful conversation without it just being, boom, here you go, please sign this. I wanted to be an authentic conversation, so they don't, I, I want to know, just as I had gotten to speak with the Artiscape lady, that's why she's actually here tonight, because I called her to have that conversation, which I told her, if you're for it, great. If you're against it, great. Just whatever it is, tell us, and we'll address the issues and try to troubleshoot. We want this to be, again, I said this earlier, it's a positive thing. So we see the list, you know, it's a lot, but it's, you know, whatever we have to do to get through it, we know the contingencies, and we're hoping that everybody's on board with it. So it's just a matter of getting through it, and we will.
Okay.
September 9th is great. It's eternity for me.
Yeah. You have a thing. It is, huh?
It is.
Okay. Just something that kind of disturbed me a little bit.
What's that?
That this event was advertised before any permission was given at all. And the Technical Review Committee just gave a tentative agreement with you, that, you know, you can move on as long as you do this. And it, it sounds like that was understood as the acceptance of everything, which it isn't. So I think it would, you know, in the future...
Right.
I think it would be nice if both sides communicated better.
Right.
We have a huge area up at the Weers, Lakeside Ave. Wouldn't it have been something to close both ends, and you do your chaos and whatever up there? I mean, it's a huge area. You could probably put 30, 40,000 people up there. How many can you put in Lakeport Square?
Forty-three hundred, between the block that we're...
Okay. Now, you're, you're nationally known. Lot of excitement, lot of wonder. Do you think only 4,300 are going to come? What are you going to do with the other 5,000 that show up that have, can't come in? They're not going to be happy.
Are you suggesting we move it to the Weers?
I don't know.
Join the Blues Fest?
It's loose, it's loose, it's, no, I mean, a different date would have been great, you know? So now you're asking a police department that have 40 police officers...
Right.
To cover a huge event at the Weers, and a huge event here.
Right.
It's not Las Vegas where they have tens of thousands. I don't know.
Las Vegas, I wouldn't be standing here in this meeting. We did that.
Well, I understand, but this isn't, this isn't the town that never sleeps.
Right. Which is why, and we, we told the special committee on Friday, normally we don't ask permission, we ask forgiveness. This is a first time, for real, 17 years of his assistant, I've had a lot of difficult conversations after the fact. But, you know, we wanted to come in and be respectful. I actually met with Mayor first and let him know, this is what we're planning on doing. We're happy to be here. This is where Justin was born, this is where the store is going to be born.
And we're glad of that.
Yeah, absolutely.
But you've got to understand, coming to town...
Right.
It's great your business is here, and we hope it flourishes.
Yeah.
But coming to town and buying a store and all that, you become a neighbor, correct?
100%.
Okay. So you have other neighbors that have been around for a long time, so that part is, let's be a good neighbor to our neighbors.
Yeah.
Okay?
We're hoping this is a good neighbor.
Well, I, I understand, but more coordination, I think, would have been better. You know, to me, the venue up at the Weers, other than that night, would have been fantastic for you. I mean, you could have done the whole strip, boats in the background would be there, I'm sure.
Something to consider, but our store in the background is what we're after right now. We want people to come in and enjoy the grand opening. That's what it's about.
What I'm just saying is, I think you're going to get a whole lot, more than 4,300 people. How are you going to control that?
More than 4,300.
I think so. How are you going to control that?
That was a conversation we had with the, with Chief...
Canfield.
Yes. And trying to, you know, navigate that, and I know that that was one of the stipulations that we discussed, and the problem, you know, he had brought up, want us to ticket the event, even though it's a free event, being able to put a number on it. That way, we can go ahead and we can designate parking ahead of time, and we can get an idea of how many people are... That sounds great in theory. The problem is, is that the world that we live in is in social media. We don't know how many people are going to show up.
That's what I'm saying.
Right. So I, we're not going to lie to you and say, okay, cool, it, the space holds 4,300, we're only going to have 4,300. We can, you know, turn away 5,000 people or not, you know, accept them in.
Do you have staff security that'll be here to do that?
We have, we're going to have police detail, we've got...
That's our police, correct?
Right, that...
So our police are going to have to tell these people, you can't come in. Do you think they'll be happy about that?
Well, there's a list.
So what kind of confrontation could happen just for that?
Right.
I'm just saying, you know? Like I said, I'm glad you're here, you know, and, but there's a lot of things here that you're trying to pack into a very small neighborhood area.
Yeah, it's in, I mean, we, we invested in it, you know, so we understand it. What is your suggestion? Are you saying we cap it off, or are you saying that we move it to the Weers? Because our building is...
You can't move it to the Weers now. I mean, it's been out in media for six weeks, basically.
Right.
It's on Channel 9, it's been on there numerous times.
So what's your suggestion for resolution in that?
I don't think he's suggesting that we change anything. I, I think, I think what he's suggesting is that, you know, I kind of get it, you know, this is something you want to do, so you put it out there, and then like, it's not, probably not like Las Vegas or any other cities, you know? There's stuff that you've got to do with the city and cooperate with them, and I think that you're doing that or trying to do that. I'm not suggesting he's saying, that the Counselor Hamel is saying, don't do it.
Sure.
I don't think so. I think he's saying, this is an event that could have repercussions that we're not aware of, but it's exciting enough, and your enthusiasm for the city of Laconia is appreciated, so let's give it a shot and see how it comes out, because, you know, if 5,000 people show up, we'll probably be able to handle that. If 75,000 people show up, you'll be saying, oh, what? Huh?
75,000 people show up, and I'm the contact person, ho, ho.
Yeah. So I, I don't know. I, I trust you and what you do in terms of your promotion, to what to anticipate for, for people coming to the event. That's something I'm not familiar with. I would trust you to do that, since you do that all the time, don't you?
Yep.
Yep. So I don't think, at least, I'm not reading that as saying, don't do it.
As a contact.
And if I'm wrong, the council can tell me that. But I, I like this idea. I like this excitement. I like what you folks are doing and want to do and bring to the city of Laconia.
Thank you.
So I, for one, want to say, rock and roll.
I, I love you. Backstage pass for you, for sure.
So, so Dave, is that what I would have said?
That's what I said. I'm the only guy who says rock and roll. I'm not, I'm the only, I'm the only old guy up here who says rock and roll.
He's bucking for a VIP parking.
You got it.
I got one. I'm right above, I'm right on top of the hill, right, looking down on, on Lakeport Square.
There you go.
All right. So now that you, now that you said what I want, you know, that I was going to say, but anyway, go ahead. The other thing, too, is the times we live in. Are you going to have security there for backpacks and all that kind of stuff?
Yes. We, well, yes.
I mean, that's...
Yeah. That was the conversation, again, with the captain and the chief as to how we're going to do that. We're going to have volunteers that are going to be there, we're going to have event staff that will be present in a lot of it, and making sure that that gets done, and doing the best that we can.
Okay, so, because one of the word, two, a few of the words you said that kind of shakes me up a little bit is that, in, I guess you do the events, and then you say you're sorry afterwards.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's on public record in the meeting that Justin said on Friday. But yeah, no, I don't, if you've seen any of our videos on YouTube, in Vegas, the boys had a full-on grinder part of our show, on top of our tour bus, down the city streets in the strip of Las Vegas. That was a conversation after the fact, that I was sitting there going, I'm so sorry, so sorry. I mean, at the end of the day, we are Chaos and Kindness. That chaos comes from a very real, fun, crazy place, but the underlying message is always coming back to the method of kindness. Justin's the first one to tell you he loves to run down the street naked. He'll do it for a cause.
Don't say that.
Right. But he's out on, in public about it, but it's for a cause, is the point. There's always a reason.
Don't want a backstage pass for that, Counselor Hamel?
That'll be more than 75,000 people showing up for that one, I promise. But, but no, the, the point is, is that it's, there's always a reason of kindness behind anything and everything that we do.
Yep.
And that's where it comes from.
Well, you know, I, I don't disagree with what you want to do there.
Yep.
I just wish that, you know, you would have contacted us a lot sooner, then we could have said, eh, not a good day because of what's going on over here, pick another day. It's what it is right now, so... But I think if, you'd have, you got to get all these things done.
If they're up to me personally...
Anyone else have any questions for Wendy while we have her here?
Yeah, how you doing?
I like a very short, if this could have been condensed into three days, then it would have been a little bit better for, I think, the team and everybody involved. There's a lot of details.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, guys. Thank you. Are we good?
You're good.
All right. So I'm going to read this proposed motion, and then I'll leave it up to you if the counselors wish to make this motion. But for the public's benefit, I will read it here. The proposed motion is, pending Special Events Review Committee approval and related conditions. I move to approve Temporary Traffic Order 13, Chaos and Kindness Event, to be held on Saturday, September 21, 2019, and to require cash in an amount to be determined from the organizer prior to the event that will be placed in escrow to cover all estimated and anticipated overtime costs and services related to the event, with any overage in escrow funds returned to the organizer after the event. And furthermore, in a desire of the city and Chaos and Kindness to share a successful day with other businesses, it is imperative that the applicant make a concerted effort to personally contact businesses within the traffic detour area in order to explain that a major event is happening on Saturday, September 21, 2019, with the potential to bring many first-time visitors to Laconia, and to share with business owners how every effort will be made to support getting customers to their businesses on that date. Specifics of how those contacts were made and the level of broad-based response and support received will be an additional requirement of approval by the Special Events Committee during their meeting on September 9, 2019. So that's a lot of words. Would someone care to make that motion, Counselor? Counselor Holmes makes that motion? Is there a second? Counselor Lippman seconds the motion. Any discussion?
Can I just comment quickly? So in your actual traffic order and resolution, if you approve this tonight, subject to these conditions with my oversight with the chiefs, this is being handled with special events on that day, the 9th, and any changes that need to be tweaked are coming through my office. I certainly would update you, but it's not coming back to the city to say yes or no at that point.
Right.
You're approving it conditionally.
You will certify these conditions have been met.
I will certify the conditions with you, yes.
And if it's not true, it will come to the council on the night anyway.
If it's not true, I will bring it to you that night, because that Special Events Committee doesn't meet until that day, so there's no way a response could be in your agenda packet anyway.
Understood.
But I can assure you, we will be having regular updates with the applicant between now and the 9th, because we all want this to be successful.
All right. Further discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Six votes in affirmative, motion carries unanimously. And I would ask the city manager to get a copy of this to Wendy.
We just did.
Just did. Okay. So you have everything in writing, then, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, I have, I have another question. So by them contacting these businesses, if 90% of them aren't happy, so you're going to make the decision on that?
If 90% aren't happy, and I'm hoping that feedback comes as we...
Just throwing out a number.
And we tried to encourage to get a sense of maybe not having contact with every abutter or business owner, but to at least get to the key ones, so you could hear tonight that they had spoken to these six people, and, you know, four said, great, and two said, mm, I'm hoping my business doesn't get hurt. We would have shared that tonight. So we will be following up, so that I can give you updates along the way, and not just wait until September 9th to get an entire package. And if it works out that there's a lot of opposition, I'll be sharing that with you.
Okay.
My hope is everyone's positive, and we find a way to make this successful for everybody, as it says in the resolution you just passed.
Okay. We ready to move on? All right. We are on to item 20G. Attention to page 41 of your packet, and many pages following that, Adoption of Federal Grant Management Policies and Procedures Manual. I will turn to the city manager for a brief explanation.
I'm going to turn to the finance director for a brief explanation on this. This is his...
I'm going to turn to the door. Everybody have a good night. I got to leave.
All right. I'll ask the clerk to note that Counselor Holmes has left us at 9:26 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I will be brief. In our last, most recent audit, it was noted as a, as a action item for us to work on, was that the city lacked written policies on how it manages federal grants, and we were advised to, to adopt such policies. I do want to point out that there was no deficiency or concern, actually, with how we manage the money. They were completely fine with that, and we were crossing our t's and dotting our i's. But the fact that those processes were not in writing was what, what they had pointed out. So this policy was, was determined, was put together to resolve that situation, and I'll say, for the most part, it, it documents what we already do, and it will, it will bring us more in compliance with what the federal government is looking for as we spend their grant money.
All right. Any questions? I'm sure we've all read this thoroughly enough to pass a rigorous exam on it. We ready to get to a motion? Questions or comments? All right. Motion being ordered to address, address, adopt the Federal Grant Management Policies and Procedure Manual, as presented by Mr. Smith tonight. Counselor Hosmer makes that motion. Counselor Cheney seconds it. Any discussion? All those in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in the affirmative, that motion carries unanimously. Okay. Okay, welcome signs. Uh, need approval to purchase and install welcome signs for the city in the amount not to exceed seven thousand two hundred and seventy-five dollars. Kevin Dunleavy has been working. I assume that should be Amy Lovisic.
Said had been working on this. That's how long back it goes.
Alright. And purchasing specialist Jonathan Garner picked up the project when Kevin Dunleavy left employment with the city. Attached to a couple of options that Councilor Hamel would like the city to see and vote on. Well, I guess I should turn this over to Councilor Hamel then.
Probably Amy oughta do it. Alright, well, it's, uh, we've been, uh, this goes back, uh, these ten years that the previous council said, you know, got together. So what's kind of important and a lot of it was to upgrade the entrances to our city. Uh, make them more pleasingly, uh, to the eye and stuff, uh, you know, cleaning up the trees and whatever, brush, stuff like that. And, uh, the signs have been deteriorating around the city. And the one at McIntyre Circle has already been taken down and it's been down for a year, Scott. Two years, whatever. So anyway, uh, there's two designs, uh, that are here. Uh, we thought the council, it'd be nice for the council to have something to pick from. Uh, they're, I believe they're both made out of a plastic material. They'll last a long time. Uh, the sign's been out, some signs have been out fifteen, twenty years and just need to be painted a little bit. So the first one is, uh, as you can see, it's green, uh, and then the other one is, has a blue background. The one with the blue background does cost a little bit more. There's more to it in painting it. I think it's about two hundred and fifty bucks more. So, leave it up to the council to pick which one they want. I guess the money has been appropriated for it, Scott, or it's gonna come out of the non-capital reserve?
In your fiscal impact, it says the council would need to identify a funding source 'cause there were no funds in the budget for signs.
Okay.
How many of these signs, Councilor?
Well, there's four in the city, but you don't need to do all four at once.
There's what?
You don't need to do all four at once.
So seventy-five hundred, seventy-two hundred would be all four?
For one.
That's for one?
For one. One at McIntyre Circle is not there now. There's one on South Main Street. I believe there's one on North Main?
Um-
And Court is the other two.
Should be one on Court.
Yeah, on Court Street.
So you're recommending that we bought, that we do one of these at this point?
Well, we could do two, and then two next year and, and get 'em done.
If I could have a question?
Go ahead.
My question is why we didn't have local businesses bid this?
'Cause it went out to bid and these are the people who bid. It did, it went out to bid, right, Scott?
It's, it's been out there for a long time. I'm assuming we went out to bid. John runs a very tight ship of what we have to do. Um, this, this company, this gentleman in particular has worked on many, many iterations with, uh, input coming in, um, so I, I would hate to, i- if the desire is to fund a sign, this gentleman has spent a lot of, lot of time coming back and making changes, making changes, making changes.
Well, I, I, I think that's-
I can confirm that we went out to bid.
Yeah, I, I under, I understand that level of commitment. It's just, if we have four signs to do and it's up to seventy-two hundred dollars per sign, you know, it's twenty-nine thousand dollars, whether we do it now or do it later. It just seems like an awful lot of money for these signs. They look nice, but they seem expensive, quite frankly.
Instal.
That, that's another consideration.
The, the, the posts are vinyl posts that, I think they're over ten feet long to go into the ground. They're not a vinyl, they're some kinda composite aluminum post, I believe, that are powder coated.
This is an installed price or a not installed? Seems to me, and you can probably answer this, that the green signs that are all over the city marking parks and whatnot are painted by some company in Gilminton or Barnstead or someplace like that?
So he is from Gilminton. His name is Dan Adell. He go, he owns Adell Signs. They do all of our park signs.
So to answer your question, Councilor, that all the signs around the city that are typical of these green, the green sign here are painted by this company in Gilman.
It's the same company that bid?
I don't know the signs that you see right in front of you.
This says Neo, Neopico in Concord.
Concord.
Yeah, that, it's a completely different company.
That's different, yeah.
I think it was a whole different, more weather-resistant material that was gonna be low maintenance and give us the life that we were looking for. So I think that was some of the deterioration we had seen from the other signs. Um, but again, I was not actively involved in this. Um, and then Councilor Hamel came in and kinda took the lead on it more recently.
So I think the, the green signs that were taken down were the plywood signs, right? Big plywood?
The white signs, the, the welcome to Laconia signs? The welcome to Laconia signs were plywood. And the, the ones that are in the parks are made out of wood as well and vinyl sided, vinyl, uh, lettering on top, which is why it has, why it deteriorates so quickly.
Yeah, you know, I think the signs in a park are one thing, but the signs entering the city at the four locations is something different.
I'd move that we do all four, uh, subject to confirming that it was proper bid procedures were followed.
I'd second that.
Which one?
Which one do you want?
Blue.
I, I don't wanna pick the color, but, um, whatever, the rest of the council, I'm just more interested in either one will work in my mind.
Alright, so say again what your motion is, Councilor.
My motion, uh, on the non-capital reserve fund is to fund the four signs that we need, um, after confirming that proper bid procedures were followed as we expect.
At approximate cost of twenty-nine thousand dollars.
Yes.
So, and, and the blue one?
That's fine with me.
Perhaps since-
Aren't all the others green?
Those are the parks.
All the parks and the cemeteries and-
Yes.
Everything else, I mean, why don't we stick with what we're already?
Whatever you wanna do.
Well, I think the, I think the blue stands out and distinguishes welcoming somebody to the city. That's what I was thinking, comparing to blue to green. I guess I might offer a friendly amendment and, and, um-
Well, first of all, we need a second before we can have an amendment. Does anybody second the motion? Councilor Hamel?
I think I seconded it.
You did second it. Oh, did you?
Yeah, I, I second so many, I get, I get mixed up, but I think I did-
He made the motion, but I don't think it was seconded, was it? So Councilor Hamel seconded the motion. Alright, Councilor Hosmer has the floor.
Uh, I, I would offer perhaps a, uh, just a, uh, it might be a friendly amendment and that would authorize the, um, city manager. If proper bid procedures have been followed, perhaps there's a savings in doing all four of them at once, as opposed to twenty-nine, I, I would just like to save a little money on that, maybe we can do it.
I think this was for one sign, so maybe-
I would suggest we don't need an amendment to that 'cause the wording seems up to twenty-nine thousand dollars and we could leave it to him to-
Fair enough.
Alright, does anybody wanna put the color in the motion?
Somebody has to, 'cause just like fireworks, fireworks at eleven, I'm not picking the color.
I'll support blue.
Is, alright.
Eleven oh five.
Is that a friendly amendment to you? Is that a friendly amendment to you? Alright, so we'll add to the amendment that, that we want the blue signs to be taken out of capital reserve. You got that part, right?
Non-capital reserve.
I'm sorry?
Non-capital.
Non-capital reserve, I'm sorry. Alright, so motions on the floor, any discussion? All who's in favor of Councilor Lippman's motion, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. Alright, the next four and last four items of new business tonight have to do with the airport, and I can do this really quickly. We have, we have, as you know, the airport-related property is owned by the city and leased to various leaseholders on long-term leases. We have two current property lesses asking that their leases be terminated because they're selling the buildings that are on those leases to another party. And those new parties have been vetted by the manager of the airport and the airport authority has approved the transfer. So it now has to be, has to be approved by the city council to make it, uh, legal. So what we're doing tonight is terminating the two leases that are in existence and approving new leaseholders for both of them, okay? That's simple as that. Alright, so the first motion is to approve, uh, the termination of lease agreement between the City of Laconia and Laconia Airport Authority and Little Bear PCS LLC. Little Bear PCS LLC is a company, the company that currently owns what we all typically refer to as the College Building on, on Route eleven. Everybody know what I'm talking about? The old Southern New Hampshire University building there. It's not on the air, it's not, it's owned by the airport, but not on-
Nellows was the original.
Yes. Alright, so that's the building in question. So that building is being sold to a nursery school, preschool company based in Guilford. And they intend to open a preschool operation in that building. That's what's going on here. So the first motion is to terminate the lease agreement, uh, with, uh, Little Bear. Can I have that motion, please? Councilor Lippman makes a motion, seconded by Councilor Hamel. Any discussion? All who's in favor of termination, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative. That motion carries. Alright, next up is to approve a new lease with, uh, UHW Properties. That's the company in Guilford that is going to run the daycare center. Now, lease agreement is for forty years in length. That's typical to be reviewed in twenty years to negotiate a new rate. The agreed rate is twelve one-six cents per square foot for usable acreage for the current adjust, for the current fiscal year and adjusted by CPI for each successive year. Okay, that'll generate lease amounts of twelve thousand three hundred and seventy-nine, seventy-one dollars for the airport in the first year of base rental. And so what we're doing is authorizing me to sign on behalf of the city, the lease agreement. So move to authorize, would be, uh, motion being ordered to authorize Edward Engler, mayor of the City of Laconia, to sign the lease agreement between the City of Laconia Airport Authority and the UHW Properties, Inc., having a principal place of business at eighty-eight White Birch Drive, Guilford, New Hampshire, zero-three-two-four-nine. Councilor Lippman makes that motion. Councilor Hosmer seconds it. All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative. That motion carries. Alright, the next building is a little building on the corner of Lily Pond Road and, uh, uh, Route eleven, Lake Shore Road, which is now leased or owned by Two Way Communications, a radio company, that little building. And that is being sold to a mosquito control pest company. Okay, so the new lease is with the mosquito control company. So first motion being ordered to authorize the mayor to sign the termination of lease agreement between the City of Laconia Airport Authority and Apache Realty LLC, which is a Two Way Communications. Councilor Lippman makes that motion. Councilor, um- Councilor Haynes seconds it. Thank you. I need a teleprompter. Uh, Councilor Haynes seconds the motion. Any discussion?
My only question is, what, what are we leasing that building out for now? It seems like-
Same rate.
It's the same rate, okay, alright.
Typically, we lease non-runway or area aviation-related property for approximately twelve cents a foot. And we lease runway access, uh, property for about seventeen cents a foot.
Okay.
For a new lease. Okay, and lastly, a move to authorize-
I think they don't have the vote.
I'm sorry, do, we didn't vote?
We didn't vote, sorry.
Did we have a second?
Yep, Councilor Haynes.
Yeah, that's right.
What's his name?
What's his name? Councilor Haynes. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. Thank you for reminding me of that. Alright, finally, the last vote on airport business is to move to authorize the mayor to sign the lease agreement between the City of Laconia, Laconia Airport Authority and Simone Revocable Trust, that's the mosquito company, having a principal place of business at sixteen Kingston Road, Unit Three, Exeter, New Hampshire. That motion, Councilor Hosmer, seconded by Councilor Lippman. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. And we are on to unfinished business. First item of unfinished business is discussion regarding placing a question on the November five, two thousand nineteen municipal election ballot to authorize the permitted operation of New Hampshire Lottery Sports Betting within the city limits of Laconia. Any, Councilor Lippman? Like to put that motion on the table? Alright, Councilor Lippman moves to add to the November five, two thousand nineteen municipal election ballot a yes or no vote on the question of permitting the operation of New Hampshire Lottery Sports Betting at qualifying establishments within the city. Seconded by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative. That motion carries and will be on the ballot. Next up is second and final reading of the amendments to City Code two thirty-five, zoning, updating numerous sections to reflect the recent adoption of the new commercial, the new urban commercial zone. First motion being ordered would be to waive a re- reading of this ordinance tonight and to read by title only. Councilor Hosmer, seconded, seconded by Councilor Cheney. All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes, the affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. Next up is to move a second reading of ordinance two thirty-five, amending section seventeen, twenty-two point three, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-six, forty, forty-two, forty-three, forty-five, forty-eight, and fifty-four of chapter two thirty-five zoning. Councilor Cheney makes that motion.
He does.
He can stop laughing, anyone.
Sorry.
That's alright. Seconded by Councilor Hosmer. Any discussion? All who's in favor of approving all of the above? I'm sorry, does this gentleman have unanimous approval to ask a question?
Sure.
Sure. Alright, come up to the microphone, please.
My name is, uh, Bob Powers. Um, I own, um, no, the property, I guess, engraving awards and gifts. I don't know if you know where we are?
Yes.
This falls within that, I guess, performance zone, the economic zone, these, but I don't know what the details are yet. Are those coming? In other words, I know that you're trying to, what, I got the intent, but I don't know of any guts to this thing.
Yes, we have, we have already done two things. One, we already voted to create one large commercial zone throughout the city made up of several smaller ones that used to be in place.
I saw the map, so I, I got that.
It was all the way from the Belmont Town Line to the Guilford Town Line around Court Street and Union Avenue in the downtown core business district. So I believe, I don't have that map in front of me, but I believe if you were in the old commercial zone, you're in the new commercial.
Yes, right.
Alright. Then the second thing we did was, we created an over, we've already done this. We created an overlay district for that entire zone that puts all the property in that zone under so-called performance zoning, okay? And what that means is, is that if someone who has a significant piece of property in that zone, such as yourself, has a proposal for development of that significant piece of property, they can bring that proposal to the planning department and the planning board. And if, if the planning board decides that the intent of the development of that property meets the city's goals as outlined in the, in the master plan, then they have the authority to waive any and all zoning requirements for that piece of property.
Okay.
And that, I shouldn't say any and all. It don't, it wouldn't invade, it wouldn't, it wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't excuse you or anyone else from environmental regulations, that sort of thing.
Right, still gonna have set-back requirements by the state and all of that, underwater and all that.
It would exempt you, for example, from height requirements, setback requirements, green space requirements, density requirements, all that kinda stuff, okay? But only if it meets goals of the city. Then the planning board could say, yes, we're not going to say, well, to, 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 for example, if your plan needed because of any of these restrictions on use, on setbacks, green space, whatever. If, 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 under the old zoning, if you had come to the city with your proposal and they had looked at it and said, well, you need twelve variances or special exceptions to do this. The planning board could say, forget all that. If we like the plan, it meets city goals, we'll approve it with no red tape.
Okay.
So that's already been approved. That's in effect right now.
Okay.
Okay, all we're doing tonight by approving this is making little bitty changes in the wording to various parts of the zoning ordinance to clarify the language.
Okay.
That's all, so, housekeeping.
I got it. So if I want to get a sense of what I could do with my property down there, who do I go see?
That gentleman right there.
Thank you.
Okay.
And great job on Armin's plaque out there. You didn't hear.
So sir, you didn't hear that, but, Mr. Powers? You didn't hear that, but Councilor Hamel was thanking you and congratulating you for the work your company did on the Armin Bolduc plant, plaque that hangs in our hallway out here.
Yeah, I think we're all, we all missed him. He was a great guy.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. Alright, where are we here?
Need to call a question.
Call a question. Okay, so we have a motion and a second for second reading, is that where we are?
Yes.
Okay, alright. All who's in favor of second reading, please raise a hand. Five- Okay, all right. All who's in favor of second reading, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. And final approval, we need to approve ordinance two thirty-five, amending section seventeen, twenty-two point three, thirty, thirty-two, thirty-five, thirty-six, forty, forty-two, forty-three, forty-five, forty-eight, and fifty-four of chapter two thirty-five zoning. Councilor Lippman makes the motion, seconded by Councilor Cheney. Any discussion? All who's in favor of final approval, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. And finally, we are back to Fairmont Street. This was tabled at our last meeting, item twenty-one C. So I need a motion to, to bring this off the table. Councilor Lippman makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Hosmer. All who's in favor of taking this item off the table, please raise a hand. We have five votes in affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. Okay, we are back to, no one spoke up tonight about Fairmont Street. So I'm assuming we've gotten no input on that?
No input. We sent the letters to both the property owners, or to some cases, the tenant as well. So we tried to cover all bases.
Okay, motion be in order for the city council to approve to designate both sides of Fairmont Street between Elm Street and Belvedere Street as a no parking area. Councilor Hosmer makes that motion, seconded by Councilor Lippman. Any discussion? All who's in favor, please raise a hand. Five votes in affirmative. That motion carries unanimously. Council comments. Councilor Hosmer?
Just briefly, I, I wanted to just call the council and the mayor's attention to, today was the tenth and final GOT Lunch for the summer of two thousand nineteen. GOT Lunch is, which is the, the meals, the food that goes out to families and particularly children in need every Monday throughout the summer months when school's not in session. And just a couple of numbers from this, this summer. Over the course of the summer, there were two hundred and thirty-seven volunteers who helped get these meals out, serving four hundred and ninety-nine children in the city. And some amazing numbers, it's, this is the ninth year of GOT Lunch in Laconia. It is now spread throughout the state. We are the first city to have this GOT Lunch program. And in those nine years, it's, they have delivered over six hundred thousand pounds of food in nine years. And I thought what was sort of anecdotal but remarkable, there have been ninety-three separate delivery dates over the nine years, and it's only rained twice. So just a, congratulations to all of the volunteers and a great organization. And, and it's, it outlines the need in our community, certainly, but it also shows that when a community pulls together, what great things they can do.
Thanks for bringing that forward. Also could note, I know on, from, from information I got earlier, I was unable to attend the final one, but I went to the first one. The numbers are actually, have been going down a little bit. So whether that represents progress or not, I'm not sure, but at least the numbers not continue to go up every year.
Yeah.
In terms of the number of children that have applied for that, or families that have applied for that assistance. It peaked several years ago. Any other council comments? Councilor Haynes?
Yes, I'd like to thank the city manager and the department heads. The, I don't know why that doesn't work. But anyways, the summer barbecue picnic was well received by the employees.
I don't want to thank them.
The cook wasn't the best I've ever heard.
Well, the hot dog guy was.
Any other council comments? All good.
Not wanting to disappoint the mayor.
Well, thank you.
I was hoping someone could tell us the status of the waiver of fees for the Democratic Party. We were going to look into that.
I think we learned that there was no precedent for waiving the fees.
I mailed out an email out after last meeting.
Didn't see it. I apologize.
So no waiver, so we're expecting that check.
And, and only from the standpoint of, and we mentioned Armond a moment ago, I, I ask again about the brick work on the old fire station. Everything else seems to be done on that property.
The chimney?
Yeah.
Or the tower.
I guess we, you know, let's put this in, let's put this in a formal, formal request. We would like to know at our next meeting what, if any, requirement is before the building owner to complete that.
We will get that for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other council comments? All right, no other business to come before the council tonight. I'm going to declare the meeting adjourned at nine fifty-three PM.